Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our November 13th, 2023 meeting. If we'd please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And at this point, I'd like to introduce the members of the public, excuse me, the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my immediate right is Jim Fitzsimmons, Commission Member. Next to Jim is Jeff Kohan, also a Commission Member. To my immediate left is J.P. Vanoyt, who is the Vice Chairperson of the Commission. And next to J.P. is Dave Parent, who is an alternate on the Commission, as Steve Allenson, also a Commission Member, is not able to attend this evening. Dave will be sitting in for Steve. At the lower table is Cheryl Ann Tubby, our Recording Secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pagini, our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Sykter, the Chairperson of this Commission. Before we get started, there's one item on our agenda that's not going to be heard this evening. It's a resubdivision, one lot, five research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, seven research Parkway. The applicant has asked for no action to be taken on this application, and most likely it'll be heard at our December meeting. Which brings us to our next order of business would be consideration, approval of our minutes for our meeting of October 11th, 2023. Any Commission Members with any corrections, additions, notations to the minutes? Seeing none, excuse me, Mr. Vanoyt?
No, go ahead. I was jumping the gun.
Jumping the gun, okay.
Sorry.
So at this point in time, apparently Mr. Vanoyt has no corrections, additions, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning for Wednesday, October 11th, at 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? And with that, we'll move to our first order of business, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit revision, eight vacuum booms, eight foot high, for N. Kamal at 954 South Colony Road. And Mr. Parent, if you'd please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
The legal notice is special permit revision request for Narish Kamal to add four additional vacuum booms, eight feet in height, at an existing car wash facility located at 954 South Colony Road, CB40 Commercial Business Zone. And, okay, and the documents I have are, there's a site plan by OCC Design Consortium LLC revised to August 29th, 2000, I'm sorry, revised to October 9th, 2023, and that's document 41023. I have another document for, and this is detailed, I shouldn't say sketch, a plan of what a single boom, single vacuum, left mount, express cleaner looks like, and that's document 41023A. Have an inspection report from the Wallingford Fire Department, and that's dated 41023B. I have a, okay, I have a planning and zoning interdepartmental referral, and notice of proposed development, and it's signed by Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer. That's Exhibit 41023C. I have a planning and zoning departmental referral, notice of proposed development, and that's signed by Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planning Planner. I have a inspection report for 825 South Colony Road by the Fire Department, and that is document number 41023E. And that can, and that is all the documents that I have for this particular matter.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Jeremy Grossman, Scrub and Bubbles Car Wash.
Sir, if you could please pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you.
How's that?
That's great.
Perfect. So we're proposing to add four vacuums and eight booms to complement our vacuum system. Pretty cut and dry.
Seems pretty straightforward. Mr. Pagini, any comments on the application?
No, I already spoke with the applicant, and I spoke with the applicant. He had addressed any comments that we had had, so it's basically just formalizing it for the Commission, just to make sure that you're okay with the addition of the vacuums.
Commission Members with any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Any Members of the public like to comment on the application, please come forward and name an address in your comments. Seeing none, bring it back to the applicant. Seeing you had such an extensive presentation, I doubt that you have very much more to say. Is that fair to say?
Nothing else. I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, if there's no further comments from Commission Members or from, yes, Mr. Parent?
Yeah, I'm, this Commission doesn't like after-the-fact applications. And what is particularly bothersome is that this was brought by a very knowledgeable applicant, person's run several car washes, and ordinarily, it'd be very praiseworthy that the person's accomplished that much. But to go ahead and do it, I think with the knowledge that he needed a permit beforehand, diminishes his reputation. It doesn't help the attorney who brought him as a client, because we, you know, we like to believe that when an attorney brings in the client, the client is pretty straightforward. Okay, I'm not referring to you, sir. I'm referring to the owner. And, so when you don't like something, but us not liking something, okay, they say, well, we're just going to return, turn it down. There's something that saves the applicant, and that is that if we had seen the application before, we would have approved it. And I think, given the brevity of your application, and it's just telling us exactly what you want to do, yeah, probably, you know, you'd probably be out of here already. But in this particular case, I don't like it, but, you know, I really don't like that treatment of the board. I really, and it, and when we approve things after the fact, it gives out an erroneous impression that you can, that a property owner can do what he wants. If he gets caught, they can do a retroactive application, and we will just approve it. It's not the case. But in this particular case, had you come in, I said, we, I would have voted for it, and I would be in favor of voting for it tonight. But I really do not like the way in which it was done.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Any other Commission Members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, and actually, my comment is to the Town Planner. Why wasn't this submitted administratively? I mean, we're talking four vacuums at a pre-existing car wash. I mean, it's minor, and I know the notes to us say it was done after the fact, but why wouldn't, this appears to me, to me, de minimis. Why, why could we not have done it administratively?
Because a car wash facility requires a special permit, and this was kind of an expansion of the use of the car wash, and they were over eight feet in height, so some required a variance as well.
Height.
Eight ninety-five. Yes, their original vacuums, I believe, are four feet, and these are almost eight feet in height, so the eight ninety-five required the variance for the property line, so we thought it was, you know, best to come to the Commission, because I know there was discussion about the vacuums at the other car wash facilities, so that's pretty much it.
Thank you. In the last year, I've learned a lot about car washes, so, thank you.
No more questions. At this point in time, I've entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close public hearing for application 410-23, special permit revision, eight vacuum booms, eight foot in height, for N. Kamal, 954 South Colony Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 No. I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes.
And yes. At this point in time, I've entertained a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 410-23, special permit revision to Kamal, 954 South Colony Road. Special permit revision and site plan approval request to add eight vacuum booms, eight feet in height, where four currently exist as at an existing car wash facility located at 954 South Colony Road on plans entitled "Site Plan for Car Wash, Quick Loop Detailing Facilities," dated 8/29/2006, and revised to 7/10/2023, with one condition, six copies of the approval, approved final plan forward to the Planning and Zoning Office.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. Application's been approved, sir. Brings us to the next one. Special permit revision, eight vacuum booms, eight feet high, N. Kamal at nine, eight ninety-five North Colony Road. And with that, Mr. Parent, please read the legal notice and note all correspondence.
This is application 41323, special permit revision request for Narish Kamal to add four additional booms, eight feet in height, at existing car wash facility located at 895 North Colony Road, RF40 Route 5 Zone. I didn't see anything.
And with that, I don't believe there's, yeah, Mr. Pagini, there's no attachments to this.
I think the other departments were, thought it was the same thing, I think, so I'll just double-check, but there was a variance required for this application, so they may have commented during the variance process.
We would normally get the correspondence to put into the record.
I'll double-check. I don't know why that wasn't added, but.
No, there was no correspondence.
Well, nothing from the fire marshal, nothing from anybody else that reported on the other one? Is that correct?
Correct.
I guess I'd ask Commission Members how they feel about the application. Normally, we get comments from the various departments on the application. We had comments on the prior one. We don't have any comments on this one. From my perspective, I feel that we should have, should have comments for the record. Would be my, my position to simply continue this to next month until we have comments from the various departments. I'd open up that to other Commission Members, how they may feel.
Agree.
Agree.
Yeah, I agree. I'd especially like to see Inland Wellens. They probably don't have any comments, but I'd like to see that.
Sir, I think we're going to be seeing, seeing you here next month. It's, I apologize, it's not your issue. It's, you know, it's essentially the Commission's issue. So with this, I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until next month.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for application 413-23, special permit revisions, eight vacuum booms, eight feet in height, N. Kamal, 895 North Colony Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes. And again, sir, I apologize.
No problem.
Which brings us to our next application. It's a special permit nursing home to multifamily residential, 55 LLC, 55 Kendraki Lane. And again, Mr. Parent, if you'd please note all correspond, excuse me, first, read the legal notice, and then note all correspondence for the record.
Let's see. Item number 412-23, special permit request for 55 LLC for an adaptive reuse to convert a former 180-bed nursing room, home, sorry, to a 71-unit multifamily residential building at 55 Kendraki Lane, R18 Residential Zone. So, okay. I, I do have a procedural question before I begin, so.
Sure.
Okay. Has Janet Gilo, who lives at, who is a media property owner to the south, and from whom we have some correspondence, has she been noticed of this meeting? Because I know that at the last time we were going to do that, she had not been.
Are you asking the applicant?
No.
All the parties that were within the required area of notice have been provided notifications. I'm not sure that individual person.
She lives at, she lives at Two Meller Drive, and the water that flows out from 55 Kendraki Lane goes directly onto her property. And we do have correspondence in the, in the file from her, you know, where she's detailing her problems. So those problems aren't your problems. I mean, that's solved somewhere else, but, you know, but the thing is, she wasn't noticed the last time.
Yeah, and I think the reason is that she's not in a butter. You know, your, your procedures and your requirements for notice are very specific. We've complied with those. There's a list of, you know, the contiguous.
There was a list, yeah.
Yeah. So all of them have been notified.
But they're on her property at Butters.
No. I have the map, if you'd like to see it.
Okay. Fine, that solves that. Okay. Okay, with that, we go off. Documents that you were doing is, Wallingford Fire Department inspection report, and that's document 40823A. Then we have a letter to 55, East 55 LLC from Kevin Pagnini, Town Planner, and that is dated May, May 22, 2023, and that is 40823B. We have a memo to Planning and Zoning from the Department of Engineering dated May 31st, 2023, and that's document 40823C. An inter, an inter-office memorandum from Scott Senior, Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, dated May 31st, 2023, and that's document 40823D. We have an email from Dennis Sennaviva regarding 55 Kendraki Lane, and that's, it would seem, it's received on June 5th, 2023, and that's document 40823E. There's a planning and zoning interdepartmental referral, notice of proposed development, and that's signed by Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, and that's, let's see, he has a June 7th, 2023 receipt day. That's 40823F. There is a letter from Allison, Allison Pearson and Cassidy, Engineering Associates, to Kevin, Kevin Pagnini, Town Planner, dated June 7th, 2023, and that's 40823G. And there is a letter from Universal Cleaning and Restoration LLC to the Wallingford P&amp;Z, and that's document 40823H. An inspection report from the Wallingford Fire Department, it's received June 26, 2023, that's document 40823I. Another email from, let's see, it seems to be from a Bob Doolittle, but it's, and to Kevin, to Kevin Pagnini, Planner, and that's document 40823J. Town of Wallingford Economic, a letter from the Town of Wallingford Economic Development Commission, dated June 27, 2023, and that's document 40823K. A memo from Amy, and regarding the, the application, and application document number 40823, and it's dated July 23rd, and this is document 40823L. Let's see. A memo to Kevin, Kevin Pagnini, Town Planner, from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, that's dated July 7th, 2023, and that's document 40823M. An email from Dennis Sennaviva Esquire to Kevin Pagnini regarding the application, and it's dated July 9th, 2023, and it's document 40823N. See, a letter to the See, a letter to the applicant from Kevin Pagnini Planner dated June, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and document four oh eight two thirty O. A memorandum from Kevin O'Hare to Kevin Pagnini Town Planner regarding stream quarter crossing matter, dated July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, document four oh eight twenty-three P. A letter from HK Associates Professional Structural, Professional Structural and Civil Engineer, addressed to fifty-five LLC, and that's document four oh eight twenty-three Q. A letter from Janet Gilo, Two Meller Drive, Wallenford, Connecticut, dated August ninth, twenty-twenty-three, document four oh eight twenty-three R. A picture of fifty-five Kendraki Lane culvert after storm, doesn't say who wrote it, but it's document four oh eight twenty-three S. An email from Allison Kapuschinsky, engineer, to Dennis Sennaviva, and she stated August tenth, twenty-twenty-three, it's document four oh eight twenty-three U. An email from Dennis Sennaviva Esquire to Kevin J. Pagnini regarding telephone call, and this is document four oh eight twenty-three V. A letter from Amy Alise Robb, fifty-five LLC owner, dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and this is four oh eight twenty-three W. Legal memorandum from Janice M. Small to Kevin J. Pagnini dated August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, document four oh eight twenty-three X. A memo from Department of Engineering, Amy Kapuschinsky, dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and this is document four oh eight twenty-three Y. A document from Halsey, it's a letter from Halsey Pearson and Cassidy to Allison Kapuschinsky, P.E. Town Engineer, dated September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, that's document four oh eight twenty-three Z. Then I have a memo from Janice, oh, to Inland and Wetlands and Water Course Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, from Amy Kapuschinsky, and this is document four one two twenty-three A. A memo from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planning, to the members of the Inland, Wetlands and Water Course Commission, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is document four one two twenty-three B. I have a series of maps, and that's from, trying to see the owner. Doesn't say, but it's prepared for fifty-five LLC for property fifty-five Kendraki Lane, and it contains a series of different maps. And this is from Alise Pearson and Cassidy, and this is four one two twenty-three. Then I have a, another letter from Allison Pearson and Cassidy Engineering Associates to Allison Kapuschinsky, and this is four one two twenty-three C. Better be one, oh, yeah. And I have a, a letter dated May, from Colleen Byrne, from Soli Engineering, to the Wallenford, Town of Wallenford Planning and Zoning Commission, dated three ten twenty-three, and it doesn't have a document number on it. And that is all the documents I have.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin, for going through the alphabet. At this point in time, if the applicant would please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your record. My name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, seven twenty-one Broad Street in Meriden. To my left is Amy Alise Robb, who's a representative of the owner applicant. To her left is Jim Cassidy, our project engineer from Alise Pearson and Cassidy. And behind me in the first row, I believe, is Matt Baldino, the traffic engineer from Soli Engineering. The reason for the lengthy alphabet notation tonight is the fact that you note there were two different numbers on the exhibits. We were here before you on June twelfth, as same special permit application, a little change we're going to talk about in a second, but I had asked the planner to include all of those exhibits as we wanted to incorporate all of them to the record for tonight's meeting. I did want to point out, though, that exhibit four twelve dash twenty-three B was actually from your Corporation Council, Janice Small. It was addressed to members of this commission and to members of the Inland and Wetlands and Water Course Commission. So we were here back in June. It was a lengthy meeting, you may recall. We'll make the presentation again for the record as we need to do so. But I wanted to sort of go over a couple of quick things and tell you why it's been several months since we've been back. One of the most important issues, and I think all of you addressed it in our presentation in June, was that this property had had some history that was unknown to the applicant, and that was that back in June of two thousand and eighteen, when it was operated as a convalescent facility, there had been a, some kind of problem with the driveway where the culvert had collapsed going into, into the facility. And so then applicant went to Wetlands to seek a, a consent order to correct that particular situation, a sort of emergency situation. Fast forward five and a half years later, it became a problem for my client because work was done, but no plans were ever submitted. And so I think this commission was cognizant of that. It was made very aware. We made that part of our presentation. It was part of your record. And so we've spent the last couple of months not really changing the application itself. The adaptive reuse and the number of units remains the same. The parking spaces, we'll talk about that again tonight. But the primary driver of the delay was to develop a cure, a fix, for what had happened in two thousand and eighteen, and now, you know, falls to my clients to, to complete. So one of the things that Mr. Cassidy will be talking about in his presentation is the existence of a revised drainage plan, which will, which has gotten the blessing of your town engineer in exhibit four twelve dash twenty-three A. And we are waiting for that in order to come forward and, and make this presentation. So that's just an overview, Mr. Chairman, to give you sort of the background, why some of the exhibits are noted as four oh eight and some of them as four twelve. So the property itself, as you know from the application now twice, is eleven point five eight acres in size. It is currently developed with a sixty-nine thousand nine hundred square foot building that had been most recently occupied and operated as a hundred and eighty-bed nursing home. The parcel is owned R eighteen. Pursuant to your regulation six point one six, the applicant proposes to make a redactive reuse of them to multifamily for this parcel, which again is provided for in your existing regulations. There was no variances or other relief slot that's pursuant to your regs. So we're looking for your approval to develop the existing building, which will have an extension on the two second-story wings to be symmetrical with the first floor, with seventy-one market rate residential units. Fifty-three would be one-bedroom and studio units, and eighteen would be two-bedroom units. Again, the proposal is substantially lesser than the hundred or so units that would have been permitted by the, by the wording in your zoning regulations, but the owner wanted larger units in order to attract market rate tenants. There are a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces on the plan. Jim will go through that with you. That's the number that meets your zoning regulations, and that's the same number that was here when we were here back in June. One of the things that I'll have Matt Baldino from Soli Engineering talk about, our traffic engineer, is his conclusion that, that the proposed traffic trip generation, anticipated trips generated by the proposed adaptive reuse can be accommodated by the surrounding road network without adverse impact to the operating conditions of the adjacent roadway network. And again, that was confirmed by your town engineer, who's, who's written a memorandum on that issue also. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn to Mr. Cassidy, and have him go to the easel and, and present the plan.
Good evening for the record. Again, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer in principle with the firm of Alise Pearson and Cassidy. My office is located at six thirty Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut, and glad to be here this evening, representing fifty-five LLC for the adaptive reuse of the property at fifty-five Kendraki Lane here in Wallenford, Connecticut. As Dennis had mentioned, we're proposing to do is to take an existing healthcare facility and convert it into a multifamily development as an adaptive reuse under six, six point sixteen of your zoning regulations. The first photo I have up before me is an existing site photo. I'll go through it again. On the top or to the north is Kendraki Lane. The property itself is outlined in red on this site. Total of eleven point eight five acres, zoned R eighteen residential zone land. It is bounded about, on Kendraki, about two hundred and sixty feet of frontage, and then there's some existing residents along Kendraki, along with, along the east side. This is the rear yard, one of the houses on Kendraki. It's bounded on the south or the bottom here by existing residents along Sawmill Drive, and then bounded on the west side or this far left side by existing houses, residential houses along Bernadette Lane and Mallor Road off on the bottom. It's just off the page here. The building itself on this site is represented by the white H-shaped structure, has a footprint of thirty thousand square feet. It is an existing healthcare facility that originally had a hundred and eighty beds in it. To access the site, there is a site driveway that comes off of Kendraki down along the west side of the property, down the west side of the building, and the circumference is around the south and then back down on the east side of the building. Presently, around the surrounding building, there's a total of seventy-five parking spaces. If you were to take a look at the site, the topography is quite interesting. It's pretty steep on the back, starting at elevation of about two-ten on the southerly property line, getting down to an elevation of about one-fifty as it hits the south edge of the parking lot, and then continues to slope all the way down to the north to the point where there's a water course that traverses through the middle of the site, headed in a westerly direction and continuing down towards Mallor Road. The front portion is basically a large open meadow, also slopes at, say, a moderate grade from Kendraki back towards that water course. The only area that's really cleared right now is the front portion of the site, the side access driveway, the parking area in the area immediately around the building. The entirely east side is wooded, along with the slope along the back, or the south side is presently wooded. What we're proposing to do again is to reutilize the building, to convert it to a multifamily development. The footprint of the building is not changing at all. The only thing that will change with the building is, as Dennis had mentioned, the two northerly wings that are shown in tan here. There would be an addition that would be added to it. If you go and look at the building, that, that portion of the building is presently one story lower. The back portion is a two-story building, so that roof line for the back portion would get extended out into that portion. So the overall footprint of the building doesn't change. In your adaptive reuse regulation, what it says is that we can expand the building up to fifty percent based upon, sorry, fifty percent of the entire floor area. Based on our calculations, we're proposing to expand the area, floor area, about ninety-six hundred square feet, which actually only works out to about fourteen point five square feet, or fourteen point five percent. So we're well under the threshold of fifty percent. In addition to, as Dennis had mentioned, if you take a look at your requirements, there's specific area requirements for the units that can go in here. Technically, we can get up to about a hundred units in this building based upon the floors system that's in here. That wasn't the client's objective. They wanted to go with larger units, so we're proposing to have a total of seventy-one units in the building. The units will consist of one-bedroom, sorry, thirty-eight one-bedroom units, fifteen studio, studio units, and then also eighteen two-bedroom units. Along with the conversion of the building, your parking requirements are higher requirements for a multifamily use. Per year regulation, we're required to provide one point seven five spaces for the one-bedroom units and for the studio type units, two point two five for the two-bedroom units. So based upon the breakdown of the units, we're required to provide a total of a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces. We're going to handle the increase in parking spaces by basically reconfiguring the existing parking lot. There'd be a slight expansion of the parking area off on the east side of the parking lot. We're going to expand out the edge of the pavement, accommodate fifteen additional spaces. Presently, along the west side of the building, there's a drop-off lane and a entry. That entry would be going, or that drop-off lane would be going away. It would be accommodating an additional fifteen spaces in this area. And then we're also picking up some additional spaces in the corners of the parking lot. All said and, all said and done, we're providing a total of a hundred and thirty-four spaces just as the regulations require. In addition to, we're proposing to leave all the existing vegetation around the perimeter of the site, other than for a small section where we need to do some clearing to accommodate the new parking spaces on east side of the property. We're also proposing to go in and add some landscape islands into the parking lot. There's, these green circles represent six new landscape islands that would be constructed. We're proposing to add some canopy ornamental trees within those areas, and then all the other vegetation around the existing building would either be cleaned up or enhanced. There is a nice courtyard off the north end of the building that overlooks the water course that's down on this north side of the property. So as Dennis had mentioned, I should also note with the additional parking we're, we're looking at doing, and then sections of pavement that are actually be taken away, we only have an increase of about thirty-three hundred square feet of impervious coverage. It's a very minor increase. One of the initial concerns of the town engineer was how we're going to treat that increase. So what we're proposing as part of this project is we're going to, we're going to implement all the existing catch basins on the site with a, a unit, it's called an Apptech filter, that goes actually in the catch basin. And what it does is it helps move pollutants that come off the parking lot and treats the quality of the stormwater before it continues through the existing drainage system. Otherwise, the existing drainage system on site would remain as it is today. The other bigger thing is, when we worked before you last time, is that Dennis had mentioned back in two thousand and eighteen, the driveway that comes in, let me go to a blow-up picture of this. So in your package, there's a blow-up of the driveway area where it crosses the water course. So in two thousand and eighteen, what happened is there was a section, there were two culverts that went underneath that driveway. There were two sixty-inch corrugated metal culverts. What happened, there's a section of the culvert that collapsed. There was an emergency order by the Wetlands Commission to fix the problem so they can continue to have access to the site. And the method that had come up with that point is to do something what we call slip line of culvert. Slip line is basically you take a smaller diameter culvert and you stick it into the existing culvert that's there, and then you fill the void between the existing and the new with mortar. So ultimately, what happens is the overall diameter, your cross-sectional area becomes less. Apparently, when they did this work unbeknownst to the applicant, there was a requirement that they also provide calculations and plans for that work. What they actually did is one of the culverts, the bottom or the southerly culvert, they put a new forty-eight inch sleeve in, so about culvert, they put a new 48-inch sleeve in, so about a foot smaller. And then the northerly one, which had the collapse in it, they put a 36-inch, so about two feet smaller than was there. The work was done, no one ever really said anything, and again, we came before the commission, it all came to our attention, that they never really did what they were supposed to do, they never followed up with plans. Post, we've been working for the past several months, or past four months, coming up with a determination as to what the effects of these culverts are that are in place. Are they appropriate, or are they not? And we need to make a correction to it. After extensive reviewing and going through hydraulic calculations and determining how much flow is actually going to them, what we actually found out is by changing the diameters of the culverts, what happens is, the existing culverts will do what we call build up the head. So you build up like about one foot of water above the top of the pipe. By reducing the diameter of the pipe and the change of the type of pipe it was, when we ran our hydraulic calculations on it, the head went from one foot to about 10 feet. So it was significant. So what happens is the water is actually backing up on the east side of the culverts here. In addition to, with hydrology, what happens is, you still have the same flow going down, you still need to get the same flow through the culvert. The way that flow goes through the culvert is you have a smaller area, you have to increase the velocity. So the water coming out the other side was coming out at a much higher velocity than the original culverts that were in there. We took a look at it, and one of the big problems in trying to figure out how to handle this is, how do you replace culverts in an active brook? So my theory, and also I'll credit your director of public works, had talked about this also with me, was to leave the two culverts there, but add an additional culvert. What this allows us to do is be able to do the work while the existing brook is still active. What we'll end up doing at this point is we're proposing to install an additional 48-inch culvert, a high-density polyethylene culvert, on the north side of the existing culverts. What that allows us to do is we can run a coffer dam system from the existing head wall down to the west and then down, up the embankment, and same thing on the east side. It allows us to have an area to de-water, to work in a dry area, to actually get that new culvert in place, put a new extension through the head wall on each side, put some new riprap protection on the downhill side of it, and then be able to remove the coffer dams, and then end up having a lot larger cross-sectional area to allow that flow through. And then, we also are proposing, if you take a look out there today, there's no real outlet protection from those culverts. So we ran what's called a, it's called a D-50 calculation to determine the size of stone you need at the outlet. In addition to, we're proposing to put something that's called a riprap scour hole. So what it is, is it's a small pool at the outlet, made a riprap stone. Based upon the D-50 calculation, it's large stone, it's actually about 36 inches deep, about 24-inch diameter stone. So it's very heavy. What that happens is the one out of the water, coming out, would go into the scour hole, further reducing its velocity to protect downstream properties. In addition to, it brings it back more to the original conditions when you had the twin 60-inch pipes there. It's going to be slightly higher velocity, but the riprap scour hole reduces that velocity to keep it very similar. But the bottom line is, when you take a look at the head on the uphill side, you're only going to find about a three-tenths variation from what was really originally there, not a 10-foot variation from what was originally there. So we prepared all those calculations, we submitted, worked with your town engineer, submitted them to your town engineer. I think at this point, she's in agreement with what we came up with. This is the best way to handle getting this driveway crossing back to where it was prior to 2018 when they had the collapse. So with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation. Matt Baldini, Baldino will get up and speak a little bit about traffic on this application.
I guess before we go into that, are there any commission members that have questions for the gentleman? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, let's talk more about the culvert. So, basically, what you said, you're adding a new 48-inch. You've got an existing 48 and an existing 36, when originally, you should have had two twin 60 inches.
Correct.
So based on my calculations, with the 48, 36, and the new 48, you're still having an extra 12 inches in total, based on the old configuration and with the new.
So hydrology, it doesn't work that way? You can't just take a look at the width of the culverts, there's a bit more to it. What we take a look at is the cross-sectional area, and also we call the hydraulic radius. So it's the area that the water runs across to determine the amount of flow that goes through it. So we tried many different options, of different culvert configurations determined. This brought it back, and actually slightly less. Again, so what happens is the head on the original culverts was about one foot over the top of the pipe, based upon the new calculations are about 1.5. So we're a little bit higher than what was originally coming out of those pipes for head, or on the backside.
Yeah, I thought in your presentation, you said with the two old pipes, that you had a 10-foot head.
With the fix, the slip line that they put in. So with the 48 and the 36, the way it stands today, based on our calculations of a 100-year storm event, there's 10 feet ahead on it.
So, basically, what you're saying, and I appreciate all the calculations, yeah, it looks, there's a lot of calculations here, and certainly, I'm not a hydrologist. I just want to make sure that, you know, based on this new configuration, that it in fact does handle, you know, your 100-year storm, or, you know, the worst-case scenario.
It handles 100-year storm, correct.
You know, to this, to this layperson, you know, it really doesn't make me feel that comfortable, based on, you know, the, what, again, seems to me to be a minimal increase in that volume that can be handled by the three culverts now. My other question is that, how are you going to direct the stream into that third culvert? I mean, is that existing brook wide enough at this point?
Very wide at that point, yeah. It's very wide. That's why we ended up putting it on the north side of the culvert rather than on the south side. There's additional room. Can you actually see this blue line? That's the edge of the water and edge of the wetlands. So we had a lot more room to work with on that side, and that's why the culvert's going on that side.
And my last question right now for the culvert, and this may be kind of summary when we get to the end of the presentation, but, you know, the past history of this, nobody took responsibility for fixing the problem. When we go forward with this application, the town engineer has, you know, stated that this is going to work. You know, you've stated that this is going to work. You know, the property owner, you know, is assuming that between, you know, both commentaries, that this situation is going to work. I want to know, if it doesn't, who's responsible for it? Who's going to fix it? Because, you know, Mr. Parent was talking about Janet Gillo or G-Lo on Mallard Road, and, you know, looking at her backyard. That is totally unacceptable. The town should have come in and remedied this. You know, somebody from the town said to her or her family that, you know, they, the homeowners, should have gone in and cut this pipe, which is totally unacceptable. So basically, when it comes down to, you know, approving this application, I want to know who's responsible for fixing this, if it doesn't work. So, you know, I have to take your professional opinion. I have to take Ms. Cappuccins' professional opinion that this is going to handle, you know, the worst-case scenario. But, you know, we all know things happen, and my big issue is, who will fix it when it doesn't, if it doesn't?
So I'm clear on the concern. Are you concerned that the culverts will not handle the 100-year flow going through? Is that what you're asking?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm trying to understand your concern. Are you concerned that the new culverts will not handle the 100-year flow going through it? Because it's still the same flow going through it, it's just going at a slower velocity.
Right. No, that, you know, again, based on your professional opinion, Allison's professional opinion, you know, this solution will handle the flow. But again, my concern is, if it doesn't, you know, who is going to go out there and fix it? So...
We're fixing the problem that was presented to the new property owners, so...
Right. And, you know, not to, because you're the new property owners, but the old property owners in the town didn't fix the old problem. And, you know, it went through all sorts of legal things, and it doesn't matter. The woman's backyard and basement and other neighbors were flooded out because this did not work. So, that's all, you know, I'm really concerned.
Well, yeah, let's just, so, if it's the house that's to the south-north of the water course, I believe that's the one we're talking about, if you take a look at the original plans for Mallard, where the stream crosses the road, there is a control structure. It was actually designed and approved by DEP back in the day to actually use that area behind as a detention system to reduce the flow downstream. So, as part of the approval of that roadway and the construction of that roadway and those lots, it was intended that that back area would be some type of detention system to hold backwater. So, if it floods today, it's still going to flood. I'm not changing the amount, the rate of flow going down there. We're not changing that. If we were doing a development, clear-cutting the property and putting a lot of pavement in, then we have another story to talk about. We've been doing other things to control flow. This project is taking care of the problem that the culverts are undersized. They have a high velocity of water coming out of those culverts that we're correcting.
I understand that.
Yeah, we're trying to correct some erosion issues.
Okay. Thank you. I've expressed my concerns.
Any other commission members? Could you just go through, just that, was it a scour hole that you were talking about? Could you just run that by me again, and what exactly that's going to do as far as the flow and what have you?
What did, if you look at it right now, there is a, at the outlet, there is a depressed area, there's a hole there right now. And then as it continues downstream, it throttles and becomes a water course. In that area, it looks like at one point, someone had put what we call riprap stone. So, basically, it's basalt, there's larger pieces of basalt.
Could you point that out on the map too, please, sir?
So here's the driveway. These are the existing culverts. So just downstream here, there's an existing depression where the water outlets, and then it throttles down and becomes a water course, and continues off into the, off to the west here. It appears at one time, when someone was doing some work in this area, they may have tried to protect it with what we call riprap stone. Riprap is a large diameter, usually basalt angular rock. We use it to basically armor outlets of drainage systems. But in this particular case, on the original, it looks like the riprap stone isn't large enough. So if you have enough velocity, you can move some pretty big rocks downstream. We've gone through, we've designed at the outlet, a scour hole. So it's still going to be a depression. It's about 33 feet long by about 34 feet wide. It'll be two feet deep, and is actually lined with what we call, it's actually called special riprap. There's different sizes of riprap stone. Special riprap is larger stone. You actually go through what's called the D-50 calculation to determine, based upon the size of the pipes, the velocity and amount of water coming through, what size stones you need to make sure it doesn't wash away. Based upon our calculations, we made the determination that stone actually needs to be at least 24 inches in diameter, but actually 26 inches in diameter, and a depth of about 36. So, we're going to make a pool here, so when water comes out, it will dissipate any velocity coming out. In addition to, the stone is big enough that velocity will not be able to carry it downstream, it'll be able to stay in place and give you a stable outlet. Whereas today, whatever was there is gone, and any sediment or any dirt probably washed down the stream along with it.
Now, there's, I guess when I, I guess I'm having a, trying to figure out exactly where your property line is, because, you know, when you look...
So our property line is about 40 feet downstream of the outlet of the culvert.
Because if I look, there was some erosion, you could see, you know, downstream. Is that going to be, is that on your property, or is that on another property owner's property? And how is that going to be, no matter whose property it is, how's that going to be?
What we got to do is reduce the velocity. I mean, it comes out at a high velocity. That's where we're putting the scour hole, that's where we're putting the bigger pipes in. Again, based on our calculations, you know, with what's out there today, I think we had a velocity of anywhere from 17 to 18 feet per second. This goes down to about, you know, 12 feet per second. So it brings it down to about 2/3.
So that should hopefully, I guess, getting back to Mr. Cohen's point, that should hopefully address the issue that had occurred with all of that erosion that you can see in that area.
Yeah, well, that's, it's going to help it, sure. Yeah, by reducing the velocity.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
If I might, just to follow up on the two prior comments. So the, your memo, it says you're proposing a, or, sorry, the town engineer, 34 feet long by 33 feet wide by two feet deep scour hole with 36-inch special-sized riprap stone. So when you're describing to the chairman this...
She has it backwards. It's 24-inch, it's actually 26-inch in diameter, 36 inches deep. You can't put 36-inch stone 24 inches deep.
And I, when you said that, I kind of looked at the chairman, I'm like, wow. So you're saying that the special-sized riprap stone will be how large?
Average is 26 inches.
And I know you work around the state, and I'm only familiar with Wallingford and others. Where would I see something like this? Like, is this something I see along...
You'd see it like on big, large bridge crossings, where you have major rivers or streams that cross underneath a bridge, or larger diameter culverts, is where you would see stone like that, of that size. So you usually see in bridge work.
That's what I'm thinking, bridge work.
Or bridge work, yeah. Or, again, large, larger diameter crossings, yep.
All right. And I guess, again, because of the amount of water, and as you say, your goal is to control it and reduce the velocity.
Correct.
It's not technically a detention...
It's not a detention button, no.
At all?
No.
Would this have, and I don't, I don't know, and haven't been out there, have been out there, would this accumulate garbage?
Well, yeah, it would need to be maintained, just like any water course.
What I'm saying is, with these large stones, is the stone's going to be covered with empty bottles and cans? I mean, things that, things that people throw out, things that get kind of caught up in a brainstorm, all of a sudden, you're seeing stuff that's not just water.
If someone throws something into the water course, you know, most likely it's going to continue all the way downstream. The one thing about having a larger riprap, so your riprap size runs from basically intermediate standard to modified, modified being the smallest, is what you normally see around most projects, about six inches in diameter. With larger diameter stone, and we actually, it gets into the point of called like stone... With larger diameter stone, and we actually, it gets into the point of called like stone slope paving, you place them, it's a lot more flat, it's not a jagged surface like your standard riprap. So, your joints end up being smaller, less opportunity for trash to be put in them. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend anything other than...
If I might, because you used a term, and I, unfortunately, I'm familiar with it, so you'd use the term a cofferdam, so you're, the three, the culvert, the new culvert will be north of what's there, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all right, nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on Commissioner Fitzsimmons's point about the riprap and, you know, stuff collecting, you know, I've seen some installations where the riprap is covered with like chicken wire or some type of...
Those are gabions. Gabions are basically a retaining wall system where you make boxes out of chicken wire or a wire fence, and then you fill them with usually a intermediate or modified riprap, so a smaller diameter riprap. It's a way of building a retaining wall, so it's a system that the state has. This is not that case, this is not gabions.
Um, right, so, the installation of this chicken wire or whatever it's called over the riprap is not going to...
That's not the case here. We're not using the wire. It would be, that'd be gabion retaining wall system, it's not what's going on here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, the applicant would please continue their presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Matt Baldino. I'm a licensed professional engineer with solely engineering, office located at 501 Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. We prepared the traffic, the trip generation assessment for the proposed development. We utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers 11th Edition Trip Generation Manual to determine the estimated number of trips for the proposed development as well as the estimated trips for the development that exists and is approved today. And with that, the proposed development would result in twenty-eight trips during the weekday AM peak hour, eight of which are entering trips, twenty of which are exiting, and in the PM, thirty-six trips, twenty-four of which are entering and twelve which are exiting. This is an, a increase of three trips from the previous, the approved use on the site during the AM and eleven during the weekday PM, with the morning under the current approval resulting in twenty-five trips, eighteen entering, seven exiting, and in the PM, twenty-five, seven entering and eighteen exiting. Ultimately, the proposed reuse ultimately really changes just the entering and exiting distributions of the site. Rather than have employees come to the site in the morning to service the previous use, you now have residents leaving to go to work, and ultimately you have more people exiting in the morning rather than entering and vice versa in the afternoon compared to the previous use, but ultimately the trip generation would be very comparable in nature. And typically, a development of this size would not result in, would not warrant a full traffic analysis with an operational analysis of the intersection as the resultant trip generation is somewhat insignificant compared to the previous use. We have submitted this traffic assessment to the town engineer and have received her concurrence on the statement that this would not result in any significant impact to the adjacent street traffic. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of the questions regarding the traffic associated with the site.
Commission members, questions for the applicant's representative?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just by way of summary, Mr. Chairman, after the questions from the commission, I just wanted to point out, and I, maybe I've pointed it out already, but as you age, you tend to repeat things, you haven't learned that yet, but at some point that happens. My client acquired this property, I didn't do the closing, but they acquired the property, you know, you do all your due diligence, you try to find out, you know, if there's liens on the title, there's other issues, is it zoning compliant? All that work was done, 2018, let's go back to June 2018, there's a cease and correct order. By the way, at the, at the owner's request, they wanted to get into Wetlands under an emergency procedure so they could do the work right away so that the convalescent facility could still operate, which made sense. But interestingly, it stayed on the Wetlands' agenda from July until January of 2019, so for six months it stayed on the agenda, then it fell off the agenda. The work was done by the convalescent contractor, there were no plans ever submitted, I think you've heard that before, and yet, you know, nothing happened. There was no notice placed on the land records, which the environmental planner has the right to do under statute to identify this particular, you know, issue or problem. The client comes forward and, you know, wants to make an adaptive reuse of the property, it seems to be a, you know, a prudent effort on its part, acquires the property and then finds out, really almost about the time we were here in June of, of last year, about, June of this year rather, that there is this existing problem. And it's not a small problem, it's a large and expensive problem. So, there are a couple of options, but the, but the option that the applicant chose to take was to hire its engineer to do more work, to make sure that, that the site would work for it, clearly, it's already bought it and wants to move forward, but also that the site would work as it, as it had before. And so, this was not a Band-Aid like was done in 2018, this was a comprehensive analysis, an expensive hydrologic analysis of, of the waters. This was a collaborative effort, thankfully, the town did come and step up, providing some advice and assistance and direction, maybe it was more direction than advice. And they wanted the same thing that you wanted, I guess there was good communication between commission and staff, which is important. So, I think if there's a comfort level to be had for this commission is the fact that this is not a ten-cent fix of a five-and-a-half-year problem, it is a very expensive, well-engineered, well-contemplated design that has been vetted by a very capable town engineer and a gentleman that I have a great deal of comfort with in Mr. Cassidy. So, I wanted to give you that comfort level, at least from this one man's perspective.
Good, thank you. Before I go out to the public, one item that you didn't comment on was the lighting. If you could talk a little bit about the lighting, how that may or may not change on the project?
So, there's existing light fixtures out on the buildings, it is an existing lighted site. We would be, correct if I'm wrong, Amy, upgrading those light fixtures to be new, energy-efficient, dark-skY compliant, full cutoff fixtures, but we're utilizing the existing poles that are out there today.
So, they'll be essentially in the same, in the same area, but they'll be more efficient in with the full cutoff?
Correct, and, yeah, dark-skY compliant and full cutoff.
Yeah, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I believe, has another question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two questions, but I want to go back to the applicant's representative. I wrote something down when you said it, I just want to confirm, you had said the cease and desist issued by Wetlands was not filed on the land records?
That's correct.
Okay. That's not normal.
No, I think, it's kind of, I think it would be a rarity if it was filed, to be fair.
Okay.
But there is that ability to do so, and one would, it would have been appreciated, I'm sure, by the buyer here, if, you know, if six months goes by.
Right.
And I think the environmental planner called it a fool's errand to continue to go after convalescent facility to get the plans, and that's why it dropped off the agenda. Wetlands Commissioners asked the same question. But nonetheless, I mean, it does raise its ugly head eventually, and it's now here and it's now the problem of the owner. But I just wanted to point out that we're not ignoring that obligation.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the way you said it, because I, I guess my, I'm not Wetlands, you know, but I, my expectation is I would go to the town staff, because zoning doesn't usually warrant cease and desist and something filed on the land record like others, so I guess my expectation was it was on the record, so I appreciate you bringing up that it wasn't on the record. I have a follow-up question that has nothing to do with the land record, but it is, it is a question, if you've been here, you know my question. You are providing one hundred and thirty-four parking spaces, which is exactly what a regs require, and I've looked at the plans, several meetings, I don't see any area in here where the snow's going to go, because you have no additional space, unless I miss it, because it is going to start snowing soon, and I, and because it's a multifamily and you're meeting just the minimum of parking, where are you going to put the snow? And could you put it on the final plan?
Let me, I'm going to defer to Mr. Cassidy, but it was a question we discussed this morning, I said, I'm sure Commissioner Fitzsimmons is going to ask that question, you did in June.
So, presently, when you're out at the site, all the snow is stored around the entire perimeter of the parking lot. We're only expanding the parking lot on that one eastly side. It's going to be basically the same configuration of the parking lot, so they're going to do similar to what was done right now, there would be areas along the entire perimeter of the parking lot. It's not like we're a shopping center parking lot where you have vast rows of parking and the only place to put it is in parking spaces. You have a lot of perimeter area to do it. We can add on the final plan that, you know, an area for a snowbank around that entire perimeter.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Before I go out to the public, Mr. Pugini, comments on the application, observations?
Uh, no further comments, I think we've pretty much worked pretty exhaustively on this. I think the lighting was the only main issue I had complaints about, I guess they had put in some security lighting out there, so as soon as you can correct that and make it hopefully less bright than what it is now, I don't have any other comments at this time.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, members of the public would like to speak, come forward, raise your hand and your name, and we're going to start on the left side here, we'll go to the center and then we'll move over to the right. So, this gentleman will be our first speaker. Again, name and address, sir.
William Lennon, 65, Condraculane, Wallingford, Connecticut. Been living there about three years, but, from the lighting which was just mentioned, they turned off the very northern side of their security lighting. I'm, I'm more faced with their eastern side, which still has the high-intensity light coming up from like where the shrubbery is into the face of the building, and it throws it a tremendous glare out, it almost looks like a full moon every night of the month. So, I just throw that out there, because it's a, it's an irritant, it's like light pollution. Let me move on to the stream, which, I have a hill that goes right down to that stream, and I've seen that thing, when the leaves are gone, you see it, and like, right now, I start to just see the water appear as the leaves disappear from the underbrush. I've seen both of those little culverts jump their streams and rise up to tree trunks, and I guess what's being mentioned for a remedy is going to solve that on the upside of their worksite. They're also interested and they focus mostly on the remedy to the downstream side where they've got high-velocity water that needs to be calmed. And this property was designed and implemented in seventy, they didn't even have a Wetlands Commission until seventy-one. My question is always, did they ever have the appropriate engineering to handle the volume of water? Now that we've come forty, fifty years, I just think of things I've lived through like Hugo, Sandy, Irene up in Vermont, I mean, bad, bad, bad flooding. And if you're going to put one more pipe that's made out of plastic, maybe that won't rot, what about the other two culverts that are still, you know, out of galve? When are they going to collapse and go away? And does this roadway have their pyro, their electrical? I mean, what's, what's buried underneath above the pipes but below the roadbed for the utility services? And having been an EMT for fifteen years and a firefighter for fifteen years, my previous district had places just like this. And when you convert from a nursing home, which kills the rescue squad because of the high velocity of calls, you then get residents that have smoke alarms and detectors going off, and it'll take a volunteer company and kick them to death because of the high rate of, of call volume for the dumb things, which, you know, God forbid, you'd rather have it dumb than have it at active blaze. But can you really count on getting your equipment in and turned around in a K-move multiple, multiple times without having, and I'm an EVOC course, I drove fire trucks, I drove ambulances, I'm an EVOC, emergency vehicle, I'm losing my ability to remember, emergency vehicle responder course, so you could drive these vehicles and get certified, I was a New York State volunteer firefighter and EMT, captain of a fire department, lieutenant and captain of a rescue squad. You can't turn around and get your people out fast because you got to load and go, if you can't get your people in to do your investigation and then leave without hitting a car. You know, one, one bad incident with a bumper of a fire truck can really total a car, and then everybody's on the hook. So, is there enough attention to detail for where they have turning spaces for fire trucks on all three sides of the building, or just like one that they want to cherry-pick? And then, of course, I just go back to, I'm really worried that they're not going to do enough for a storm that's going to kick the ass out of my area. And I've already seen like two years ago, further up toward the street that goes to exit fourteen, water coming down the hill and running right across the road, right across Condraculane, just couldn't handle the flow, and the volume was so intense and so short of burst that the road was flooded with a couple of inches of water. And, you know, six inches of water at a velocity, you can take a car and just move it like tissue paper in the wind. So, these are all my concerns. I understand you buy something and they didn't check the right box, and you are looking at a master plumber saying, yeah, they never had a vent where they should have had it, so you're going to have to pay me a lot of money to fix this thing, they didn't mention when you bought the property and they filled out their paperwork. So, my heart goes out to stuff like that, that's what they make, you know, ask this old house about. I mean, it's like, hey, Norm, come on over here and see this, it's brutal. And I've lived through it with furnaces and water systems and sewer systems, so, I believe in housing, I'm not trying to be a wet blanket on things, but I just do want to advocate for my house's survival in case of a huge storm, and I just wonder if the engineering ever really was good enough on the original culvert to handle what we're now facing in the modern age, and a third plastic pipe. The area in Connecticut had the same problem, and they used concrete casings, and it's all over the internet, just want to ask. They had a similar flow problem, and they did the maximal, not the minimal. All right, hey, thank you very much.
Sir, just to, I guess, to address your comment as far as, you know, your concern with emergency services, I mean, our fire marshal has looked at this and, you know, looked at the plans, reviewed the plans and, you know, indicated that, you know, he has no issues with it, so that's something that has been looked at by the, you know, by our fire marshal, and it essentially, once they signed off on it, but indicated he had no issues, so...
Yeah, with that, it was professionalism.
That has been looked at.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And as far as, I guess, you know, the question was as far as the existing culverts, correct me if I'm wrong, but those have been lined, they're not just corrugated, is that correct?
So, they are HDP, so they are high intensely polyethylene, they are the same material that with the new culvert they were putting in, and they are all filled between the void of the original and new with mortar, so it's solid concrete around it, so it's not a culvert that, existing culvert's not going to collapse like CMP would previously collapse because it's metal and it rotted over time. This is plastic, all of them are plastic at this point.
Okay, thank you, sir. Again, anyone on this left side that would like to comment on the application? Now, we're going to move to the center, individuals in the center that would like to comment on the application, I'm going to start the left of center, I don't see anyone there, now we'll go to the right of center, oh, excuse me, we'll take this gentleman right here. Anyone else on the left of center, just raise your hand?
Okay.
And name and address, sir.
Rocco Monarazzo, 431 North Main Street, and I just wanted to come in and support the project, the efforts being made by the new owners.
If you could pull that a little bit closer, I get the bell here that says you're not speaking loud enough.
No, I just wanted to support the efforts being made by the new owners. You know, I don't live in that area, I know the area, I understand there's issues that have to be addressed, it would seem to me that they're, they're making every valid effort to address all the concerns bring, being brought forward. And I just think that knowing, having, yeah, some history with the new owners, that they will stand behind this project and make every effort to correct issues that they weren't aware of. aware of during the purchase. I would say I hope Wallingford will get behind this and support it. We don't need another building sitting idle, dwindling and deteriorating. It's a nice area. Residential would be great, I think, in that area. And again, I hope residents in that area would get behind this because the intent is surely to improve it and correct past issues.
Thank you, sir. Again, left of center, anyone? Yes, the gentleman in the back.
Name is Doug Myers, 11 Embaco Drive, Wallingford. One of my main concerns is schools, the traffic. I have this traffic study with textbook is fine and dandy, but be there, see what's going on during the day. School, this place is jammed up. And they really need to really take a good look at a study of the traffic there. Traffic's unbelievable. I can't go through. If I want to go to get on the 91, I have to run the other way. Can't go that way in the morning. People are parked on both sides of the road, dropping off kids. And more so since COVID, more and more parents are still dropping their kids off compared to what it was like five, six years ago. So I really like to really see some kind of really serious, you know, maybe, you know, things strip across the road, counter traffic, not by a book. Let's go reality and see what's going on. And again, I go back to the culvert myself, you know, if they're scheduled 60 inches going way back when, why hasn't it changed? Just the specs on it. Again, I'm not a hydrologist. I don't know anything about that, but it seems to me that things should be getting bigger, not smaller. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll start on the, on the right side. We're going to go with the individuals in the back, please, and then we'll move our way forward.
Pam Camparelli, 7 Sylvan Way. I expressed this concern in the meeting several months ago, but as far as the traffic, I'm truly having a hard time believing that your math and calculations are correct with the outgoing and incoming traffic coming in. My street is directly across from the entrance of this potential complex, and the amount of traffic that would come in and out of my street alone to cut through to get to the center of town would increase substantially. And the street doesn't even allow two cars to pass. It's a very narrow street. So with the extra amount of traffic that would be coming in for the small street that we have with kids, families constantly walking is an extreme concern and danger that I see on the horizon, so.
Thank you. And I believe the gentleman in the back.
John Elwood, 12 Sunnydale Lane. I'm retired. I was a biomedical project manager in Air Force Vietnam. Some of these questions might have been brought up, but I would like to do is say what I thought at this first meeting. I am concerned with the environment, so the maintenance of your filters, supposed to be clean, it's going to be maintained. Who's going to, who's going to make sure that? Also, what's the average lifetime on the slip lines? And the power grids? Are we going to have to have a new power grid? We're going to have transfer stations. On Sylvan, you know, I live on Sunnydale Lane, so are you going to put speed bumps there? Because I do am concerned about the traffic coming across because I've lived there for 40 years, and one time there was no light on Contracting and Woodhouse. Now there is. So things do happen. Okay. There is access for ambulance, school buses. You mentioned the fire. Okay? And you're saying that the velocity of the incoming water will not be impeded? I'd like to know that. And the Bridgestone, how will it affect my, my house property? What you're doing is, is you're changing my area. Okay? So I want to know, how is that going to affect my house property? Thank you.
Again, you repeat what you're, yeah, your last question I didn't quite understand.
Okay. You know, with, with all the people that are coming in, the 134 parking spots and everything else, how is it going to affect my house property on Sunnydale Lane? Now, now what it is, it's becoming not a real residential area. It's becoming somewhat of a, you know, is there going to be a zone change or it's going to affect my property value? That's what I want to know. Is it going to affect my property value?
Again, that's a, I mean, that's a question that I can't answer. I mean, there is, this is, if you're living in a residential area, which you said you are, this is going to become residential. So that's, I mean, it's
It's not, it's not single dwelling.
Excuse me, but it's residential isn't defined as being, you know, a single family home.
Would you want to live there?
Excuse me?
Would you want to live there?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't see a reason why I would not, quite frankly.
Well, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. Again, there was a question on just, the gentleman had a question on the, I think it was the lifetime or this, yeah.
The exact timeframe, I couldn't give you. I could tell you it's a lot, a lot longer than what's, was out there. It's plastic. It's not going anywhere. It's a very thick grade plastic. Actually, they're about an inch and three quarters thick of a high densely polyethylene. I mean, really, the shelf life is probably eternity. It's really not going anywhere.
And if I might point out, the original culverts that were of a lesser material were put in in 1972, it failed in 2018, so that would be 46 years on the poorer quality culvert. This is an example.
Okay. Good. And again, members of the public, I see another hand way back there. Excuse me, sir. There's, sir, there's someone behind you. Yeah, that would be you, ma'am. That would be you.
Evening, Holly Insto, 7 Sunnydale Lane. My concern is the traffic flow as well from Long Hill, Sylvan Way, and our street, Sunnydale Lane typically has been used as a cut through. And a cut through not going five miles an hour, but going 40 miles an hour. It's absolutely, with kids, it's just a very big concern. Also, the, you mentioned the snow removal with 134 parking spaces. I can't imagine where, like you say, all this snow has got to go around the perimeter. Our vehicles, are those vehicles, we have a tremendous snowstorm, are those vehicles going to be fixated where they can't move and the plows have to go around them? Or are vehicles going to have to be moved so that the parking area has to be, could be plowed? And if they have to be moved, where are they going to be moved to? All along Condracki Lane or up the side streets? It's bad enough, it would be bad enough then with the snow not having the additional traffic. And with the traffic flow, with the schools and whatnot, as other people have said, going down Condracki Lane, you can't even, you can't even get down there with the amount of traffic on both sides. The whole situation, I, I do not believe that the traffic study is accurate. There are certainly more cars coming in and out on a daily basis. Traffic everywhere is much heavier, and I just don't see how this is going to benefit our neighborhood, the housing situation. I don't think, I think it's going to affect our property values very much, and that's pretty sad. Whether it's, whether you're saying it's just residential, I think it goes a little bit beyond that according to what the sign has posted. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could just address quickly the, the issue on the snow plowing and how that may or may not be handled?
Sure. Hi, Amy Ropp, owner representative. So when it comes to residential properties and snow removal, in all of the different properties we own and we property manage in the area, we've never asked a tenant to, in a storm, move their vehicle to be towed out. There are segments of the parking lot where the snow would be moved to. And the, I guess, the concern of us having them bring their cars to the main road so we can plow the parking lot is just not something that is normally done, nor would we do. I mean, it's a vast distance anyways. It's a security risk as well. So snow removal can go at many parts that Jim showed in the, on the map, but there are corners and there are outlets where there wouldn't be parking. It wouldn't be feasible to back a car in or, or put a car through. And then along the perimeter, there's also places where we could put the snow before it's treated.
Thank you. And again, members of the public who would like to speak. And I don't see anyone behind you, so you will be the next person.
Hi, Denise Sukowski, 91, Condracki Lane. I guess I was under the assumption that a study was going to be done for the amount of cars and the traffic. And I believe, you said it was not done? But that was what we were told at the last meeting?
There was a traffic, it wasn't a traffic study. There was a traffic evaluation that was done based on the number of cars, the number of vehicles that are projected. A full traffic study would not be required. They did a, I guess, a traffic, there was a traffic report that was done, and then that traffic report was reviewed by our town engineer.
I remember him stating about his toolbox last time and how he was able to, you know, you just generalize it. And I've lived on this street for over 20 years, and I have children that are still in the school district. And the amount of cars that go back and forth every single day is not what was projected. There's, there's just no way. And especially with Sheehan and Lyman Hall possibly merging, which would be coming to Lyman Hall, again, really not a good situation. The other thing I wanted to talk about, it's not the snow removal. You have exactly the amount of parking spaces per people for units. What about visitors? Where are they going to park? On Condracki?
Number of, you'd like to address that, please?
Yeah, the regulations are established by the town. The 1.75 for the one bedroom and the two and a quarter, I think it was, for the two bedroom are, I assume, are managed by having this commission and your staff review what is appropriate for the nature of that particular use and for other uses, obviously. And so each time, you know, impactful in that number would be all those other factors in consideration. If you have a two bedroom, you may, there may be a resident who has, is living there solely, just uses one of the bedrooms as a, as a work area if they're working from home. So I would assume that when you establish a minimum requirement, usually the complaint from most of the residents is that there's too much parking, it's too much impervious area, it's taking away the green space. We're not doing that here. We've met your requirement, and as far as, you know, from a regulation perspective, that makes all the sense in the world, and my client is comfortable that those, that tenants will not be discouraged from leasing here because there won't be spaces for any of their friends to come and visit.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't believe that, but okay. Next is, I'm pretty sure, I'm sorry, sir, I'm, I'm not sure of your name, but I believe that you said, you believe or you feel?
First, just address the comments to the commission.
Okay. Well, this gentleman right here, I can't remember his name, but I believe he said, I believe or I feel it will help the situation. I've had to put a complete water system in my basement because it floods. Had to do the whole basement. I have lost between 10 and 15 feet in my backyard from, and I'm at 91, so I'm way up here from you guys. And like the gentleman stated, it comes down Woodhouse. My front yard is a river when it rains because nothing can hold it. The amount of backyard that I have lost is just ridiculous. I have put up white, the big, huge white fences. There's nothing underneath them anymore. They just sit there in the river because now it's part of the river as opposed to my backyard. So I kind of would like to get a little bit more of a reassurance as opposed to, I believe or I think, because we're still above at 1.5, not the 1. And I've been here when it was the 1. So not really feeling that either. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members that would like to speak? Before I go to you on the right side, I'm still going with people in the center.
Dennis Walcott, 15 Condracki Lane. I just have a quick, a few quick questions. On the final approval, will there be some kind of maintenance schedule for the drainage catch basins? You know, they talked about having these filters in them. Would that be put onto the final plan?
I would think that would be, sir. That would truly be something we
Would you be able to tell me what approximately the timeframe is for that? Is it every six months? Is it once a year?
At this point in time, I cannot. I guess I would ask Mr. Pugini if you would comment on that.
I don't know the specifics of the operations and maintenance manual, but it has to be filed on the land records as part of the approval. So it'll be on file on the land record, so if it does switch ownership, the exact operation and maintenance has to be, I think it's also going to be reviewed by wetlands again, too, so it may change.
So would it be on the wetlands next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. I've lived at 15 Condracki Lane for over 30 years now, and when I first moved in over there, there'd be times in the summertime that that brook would be dried up. That doesn't happen anymore. You know, climate change is here. We all know that. We talk about it every day. I think that the flow is much more than it was in years past, and I think just putting that extra pipe in the culvert is not going to be enough. You know, the flows are tremendous. You can, everybody here knows that when that brook runs, it's not a brook anymore. It's a river. My backyard has flooded numerous times. And, you know, the maintenance is just not there for this, this brook. I don't know if the town does anything to maintain it. You know, I've had tree stumps come down through this. I've had two by fours come down through this brook. They get hung up on stuff and trash. And with this new spillway thing that they want to put there, I'm thinking that that's going to collect more trash, and when we get these big rains, it's just going to go downstream for sure. I have another quick question about out in the front. There's a grassy area, fairly large. Would there be any chance of them building any more buildings on that part of the property?
Applicant's plans?
Not today. I mean, there isn't any, I don't think that that area is even capable of being developed, but I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman. But there is no plan. It's only to put the other addition on the second story.
All right, but like in the future?
We'd have to come here.
Okay. My last thing is, knowing that there's a lot of talk about lower income housing, does this project have any state funding coming from the state for this project?
I don't believe so. I guess the applicant can, can address that, but I believe early, early in the presentation, they indicated it would be market rate housing.
I realize that, but I'm just curious as if there would be any chance of
This is not an 8-30G application. This is not affordable housing. We'd like to find some money for the culvert, but I'm not sure that
We'd like to find some money for the culvert, but I'm not sure that, with the bill.
I think the answer is no.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone in the center that would like to, yes, yes, this lady right here?
Parker, 57, 77 Condracki Lane. I just have one thing to say about the study with the traffic. The town has recently, the police department has recently put a thing outside of the front of my house with cars and not, they're not counting cars, they're going how fast the cars are. We're having traffic of 70 miles an hour going down there. We have them going 50. And again, we have a school zone. With adding all these parking spaces in, the traffic is going to increase way more than that. We just had a neighbor who, a truck was driving down Condracki Lane, hit their tree, took their mirror off the car, and kept on going at 50 miles an hour. So, I, we really need to have a better traffic study done. You can't just do it remotely. You have to put something out there. And I have children that live on my street that I do not want to see get killed. There's too many kids that walk to school, all these people that are talking about their side street and the traffic up and down. Condracki is like a freeway. And I also want to bring up the melting of the snow. All that snow, when it melts, it's going to go into the brook. Is the culvert going to be able to handle all that snow when you start piling it up and it starts all melting? Because I live north of the stream, and I get a backup where it's up in my backyard.
Thank you. Anyone else in the center?
I'm June's older brother. Jerry Matiskewicz, and I live at 249 New Cheshire Road. I'd like to see the environmental impact study that was done on this property. Number one, the area has endangered species in it that nobody even discusses. All right? That's one thing. There's a farm down the street on the lower end on Pond Hill Road. There's no traffic study on that section of the road at all. And the farm that's down there has a pond on it, and it has turtles in it. And they happen to be painted turtles. Upstream on the Williams property, there's another pond with turtles in it, same turtles. On the Wallingford Country Club, there's turtles on that property, too. And they're all endangered species. And nobody seems to care that they're going to destroy the habitat for a lot of wildlife up there. Nobody cares that this building should have never been even allowed to have a permit. It's time for, it's time for the people on this board to start looking at things instead of just talking about things. And another thing I have to say, I've lived in, on Condracki Lane when it was a dirt road. We used to walk up to Woodhouse Avenue to catch the school buses. Then they changed us to the bottom of Long Hill Road after, when I went to Simpson School. So, you know, it's not like I'm somebody that doesn't know what I'm talking about. And I used to trap the Wallingford Country Club, and I used to trap the, all the area in that area for years when I was young. And now, you don't see one-third of the wildlife that you saw before. And the reason is, nobody cares. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the center that would like to speak? That's when we'll move over to the right, and I believe the young lady in the, in the white that was in the, in the center moved over to the, to the right, so we'll let her Oh, no, we saw you. You're taller than what you think.
Good evening. Dawn Lindauer, 3 Sylvan Way. I want to voice a couple of my concerns that I can attest to the traffic that goes through Sylvan Way, Sunnydale, and Shady Drive. My neighbor, who spoke earlier, I reminded her there are no sidewalks on either of the, on those three streets. There are no sidewalks for children, to walk your pets, anything. So, for those three streets, they are used as a cut-through. And I find that very disturbing. It's quite dangerous. My other concern is the traffic light that's down by Woodhouse and Condracki. I can attest to the traffic that's come through there has increased. I've been on 3 Sylvan Way for eight years now, and it is now taking me at least three cycles of the light to change to come off of 91 from work home through that intersection. I have to wait for that light to change three times before I can get through it. So, I'm not, I'm not confident in the traffic study either, just by what I witness. And as well in that, in that intersection, the water when it rains, like another gentleman had, had brought up, I don't know if it's the sewer backing up, I don't know if it's that, that river, that creek, that culvert, whatever it is, but it will flood that intersection, and you can't drive through it. So, that's a concern for me. I don't know where that water problem is coming from, this or something else, but it is an issue. So, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe the gentleman in the back. After this gentleman, are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank Stolato, 36 Broadview Drive. I'm also a member of the Wallingford Housing Authority and have been a developer of real estate for going on 30 years now. Just a couple of global points, I think, from, from a supply-side economic standpoint, that any introduction of new units, be it affordable, market, what have you, particularly of quality design, is of utmost importance to, from a couple of different perspectives. One is that we do have, the demand side of the equation here is that there is very much an interest in Wallingford, Connecticut as a quality town and home to live, and that any introduction of new units to that effect is, is a positive thing. And then, from another perspective, that potential for those that live in Wallingford and look, are looking to downsize, new rental opportunities actually spur that, and the numbers statistically prove that. I think from a more ground-level perspective, a couple of positive attributes to this particular project. You've got a responsible local owner who is a, who self-performs their management. That in and of itself is, is very important. I think from a, having run real estate, there's no one more invested than an owner-manager. Secondly, that from a design standpoint and an adaptive use standpoint, we're talking, we're hitting green boxes here. We're adaptive reuse, we're looking to correct what it appears to be a latent defect of perhaps the original design, and then further exacerbated by the damage that, that occurred apparently in 2019. So, I would encourage, you know, obviously, fast-tracking that solution. What I'm hearing a lot today is complaints about not having a solution, and I think the quicker that can be moved towards putting in, in place those remedies, I think a lot of these concerns perhaps will, will dissipate, you know, as a result of, of the improvements. And then, of course, other greening effect is in terms of the adaptive reuse and the improvement to the lighting. I heard that dark sky compliant, obviously, all of these things can be achieved, whether it was housing or a nursing home, but nevertheless, the responsibility of the, of the owner to, to recommend that as part of this redevelopment or reuse, as it were, I think are all favorable.
Thank you, sir. Any members of the public other than this young lady to my left? She will be our, she'll be our last speaker. I do want to say that the applicant, as far as the commission taking action on the application this evening, don't see the commission doing that, in that we have, you know, a memo from our corporate counsel, you know, indicating that if we wanted to, we could perhaps take action, but that this plan needs to be reviewed by our Inland Wetlands Commission. And I think that, I guess I would ask other commission members after this young lady speaks as far as how we would like to deal with it, but it would be my intent to have the Inland Wetlands Commission review what's being presented for the culvert and then bring it back to the commission. But again, if you would, please, name an address.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Diane Condracki. My husband is third-generation Condracki farm, and I just want to recap a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their time and effort that they're putting into this project. I have pros and cons, so I just want to recap just a few things that we spoke about in the past few meetings. Everyone's concerned about value. Value of your life, the value of the quality of your life, value where you want to live, and put value into what this project is going to be or not, what it's going to be. Every single one of us value our life. We value our families, we value our neighborhood, we value our town. Do we want this project to go forward? That would be a question. Do we have the answers? I don't think we have all the answers that's going to make any one of us satisfied. Do we need to put value in making a compromise? Probably. And the compromise needed to be that the questions that are being asked tonight need to be answered. They need to be answered in a way that we feel confident enough to know that there's going to be due diligence in the questions that were asked. So, a maybe, or someday, or when it happens, I don't feel is good enough. So, it's your job to take everyone serious tonight, including the people that are proposing this project. Did we want Brook Hollow to be there or the other facilities that came? No. But we did, every single one of us made sacrifices. When Brook Hollow was built, it was not maintained. I know that for a fact because my mother lived there. And I just feel that we don't want to go into step two with full face value and stating that maybe this is going to be done. We would like to see it done. We don't want to see on a piece of paper another meeting where we go through and hash the same things over again. So, the value of all of us in this meeting tonight is to take not for face value, to take truth in what is to be asked, truth into what to be told, and truth to go forward to make it better for our neighborhood, because that's what we're here fighting for. If we were in a different neighborhood, under different circumstances here tonight, we would all want the same thing. We would want value and questions to be answered, questions to be asked, and a promise to be made. That's what our value is. And I hope every single one of us takes into value and is considerate of anyone's opinion. And I just hope, being third-generation Condracki family, that's what we want for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess at this point in time, I'd come back to the applicant if you'd like to make some comments before I ask the commission members as far as how they'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's always a difficult response time, only because, I mean, these visceral feelings of the neighbors are heartfelt, and they have experiences from living there. And when you present an application, when you decide on an application, you do it based upon the best empirical evidence typically, that's what you do. The traffic report prepared by Soli Engineering wasn't designed to, to just assuage some of the considerations or concerns of the applicant. It was designed to put together a traffic report that was appropriate for this particular use. Your then-town engineer, who has traffic experience and has only, my understanding, has only one goal, and that's to make sure that whatever comes before you works. That's what she spends hours looking at, that's why changes are made, and we take four months to get back to you, because all of that is, are changes and reviews, and she wants everything perfect, which is commendable. I can tell you that a lot of time and effort has been spent on making certain that what was presented to you is, to use the term, the truth. It's not speculation, it's not guesswork, it's, it's designed based upon all of the conservative schedules that are put in place for any traffic report. So, whether you hired one traffic expert or you hire 10, if they use the standards that have been approved by the town engineer, they'll come to the same conclusion. It's not a, it's not guesswork, you know, it's just, it's a report based upon information that's been generated over the years. The other thing, I guess I wanted to point out is, you know, one of the concerns is, you know, this project, if, if this project doesn't go forward, what does? You know, I've always maintained, and this is not intended to be harsh, but properties are on the market, anyone could have purchased it, purchased it, raised the building and built the, you know, the town could have built a huge pond there perhaps if they felt it was appropriate. No one did that. So, the applicant comes forward and finds out there are certain issues that weren't envisioned. Okay, they're, they're, put on their, their big-boy pants and went forward and decided to spend the time, the effort, the money to present to you a plan that is going to ameliorate the existing condition. It makes it better. So, to get this denied, has the situation remained the same? There's no cease and consent order against the owner, it was against a prior individual. And by the way, there's no violation. It's a cease and consent order. It was a, it was an application filed by the owner to get emergency, emergency determination by wetlands. Let me turn to the wetlands issue if I might, just for a minute, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've read Attorney Small's report, I've talked to her maybe 20 times since June about this particular file. It's, it's interesting. The Wetlands Commission, when, and I have the minutes if I can offer them, when it was, when this matter was in front of it in June of 2018, it went there under a cease and consent order. So, that was to allow this property to get on an application on the agenda on an emergency basis instead of the normal waiting period. So, it was the applicant who actually submitted the application of, under a cease and consent. And the Wetlands Commission acted that night. They approved what was orally spoken by an engineer, but they properly put a condition that the plans had to be prepared, submitted, and approved by the town. that the plans had to be prepared, submitted, and approved by the town. And none of that was done, and that's really what's, why we're moving forward. And whether what was done in 2018 was good or bad, it clearly has created more headwater, you know, more problems than existed prior to the collapse of one of the culverts. So the effort here tonight is to bring some relief to that area, both sides of the brook. And I think that's, you know, that was not a simple suggestion, that's a pretty complicated solution, but one, you know, that has many hours of engineering behind it, confirmation not only from our licensed engineer, who is well-respected in his community, but also from your town engineer, who wanted to make certain that this plan worked. I mean, it's probably not a big surprise to you, and certainly not to us, that that was a key issue, you know, moving forward. And so an awful lot of time and effort was spent to make sure that what we brought to you was not just something that was, you know, put together quickly and with, you know, spit in paper. We really, it's a very sincere, detailed, well-engineered plan that will make the situation there today substantially better. And I think, you know, again, when it comes to issues like an environmental impact study, we're adding 3,000 square feet of impervious area, you know, on an 11-acre site. I don't think that we're doing anything there, this isn't a major development or a major redevelopment, it's taking the building that exists and just, and it's, again, an adaptive reuse. So while we're cognizant of the fact that traffic is an issue and the culvert was an issue, we believe that we've done everything appropriately, appropriate per your regulations and to get, to gain support amongst your staff, and hopefully to gain support amongst the commissioners by showing to you that what we've done, we've not, we've not taken a situation and just ran away from it, run away from it, suggested it's a town's obligation to fix everything, which it might be. But certainly, from our perspective, we wanted to participate and provide you with a plan that works well. It works well for the site, and it meets, you know, the legitimate parameters of the adaptive reuse regulation. I mean, you created it because you didn't want white elephants. I tell you, that would be a drag on property values. I mean, having something there attractive, market value, nice-size units, I think that can only benefit the location. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, at this point, I'd bring it back to the commission as far as discussing how we'd like to proceed on the application. Again, we have, you know, a memo that we received from our town engineer, excuse me, our corporate counsel, excuse me, you know, discussing the plan, certainly needed to be reviewed and accepted by Inland Wetlands Commission. And does the commission feel that they would, you know, like to act on this application this evening prior to that? Or would we like to wait for the Inland Wetlands Commission to take this up at its next meeting, make their decision on the plan that's being proposed for the culverts before we take action on the application? So I'd just throw that out to commission members to see what their feelings are. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is a new application, although we've seen it before, I would prefer that we wait for action by the Inland Wetlands Water Commission. I mean, the town attorney has a lot of memos that were read into the record, but the last thing she said, the last memo she wrote to us was, "The acceptance of the plan by the IWWC should be reported with Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission may take that into consideration when completing its review and possible approval." I, I think she, she's offered some very good advice, and there's been a lot of information, but I think we need to sign off on Wetlands before we can move forward.
Other commission members? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is very interesting, and I'm just gonna not pull any punches on this because when this application, 55 Kondraki Lane, came up first, first thing I said when the culvert was a question was, "This should go before Inland Wetlands." That comment, basically, you get back to Inland Wetlands, but they decided not to hear about this. So I don't remember the exact date of the initial application, it does go back several months. And now, you know, they've become involved and want to review the engineering numbers to make sure this, this will work. You know, I see a memo from the engineering department going back to, you know, October 25th and some other earlier memos, and I'm not sure, and basically, the town attorney said, you know, "Our engineer has to review this and get her recommendation back to Inland Wetlands." I don't know if, if that has, has been done yet, but it seems like the, you know, timeframe between all this communication has taken quite a while. And it's unfortunate that we are here tonight, and I think Inland Wetlands had their, their meeting a few days ago. I think they normally come before us, so that if we do not go forward with this, acting on this, you know, we have to wait another month or so before we can do anything. So I'm, I'm really, I don't know, betwixt and between that, you know, the sequence of events has occurred to, you know, delay this process. Quite honestly, I would be ready to act on this application myself tonight, but given the past history that we have waited on Inland Wetlands to make their decisions before, you know, we act on an application, I will defer to that precedent and wait until Inland Wetlands does make a decision on this. I think it is unfortunate that, you know, we are in this situation. I think a little better handling of this communication could have moved us further along. And again, I go back to the original comment that I made, that this initially should have gone to Inland Wetlands for their look at the culvert and the impact that it had been caused. So we've lost many months on this. But again, based on precedent, I will, you know, like to see the Inland Wetlands decision before we act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members?
As a former member of the Inland Wetlands Commission, I'm surprised how my views have changed. I always thought, well, why doesn't P&amp;Z do it, then we can just, then we can work afterwards? But the whole problem is that the Wetlands water courses, that is a threshold, it's a threshold issue. There's no sense for P&amp;Z going through and doing all these things and passing something when you find out, no, that from, I guess, hydrological point of view, it's not going to work. So I realize that you guys, that applicant has spent a lot of time, and we have spent a lot of time, we've kind of reheard the whole thing all over again. But having been on Inland Wetlands, I would prefer that they take a look at the plans, they make their deliberations, because we deliberate differently than P&amp;Z deliberates or the way that CBA deliberates. And it'll take, it may take another month or so, but what you'll have is something that's, it's something that we can all be comfortable with. So, yeah, I would, you know, I would like to get the thing done. I would like to have gotten the thing done in July, but I think you have, but it's, it's always better to do it the right way than to have to do it over. And so again, I encourage, it should go to Inland Wetlands.
And I take it, Mr. Benoit, you probably agree with that. So I think that we're going to be waiting for the Wetlands to make their, you know, make their determination. I would just, you know, I would just ask, as far as commission members, I'm not going to close the public hearing at this point, but is there any additional information that commission members would want from the applicant for the, for the next meeting? I think, you know, the applicant has given a, I think, a very thorough presentation of the, you know, of the project. I think, like Mr. Cohen, I feel certainly very comfortable about voting on the application this evening, but I feel the most appropriate action would be to wait for Wetlands to essentially sign off on this. But, Mr. Cohen, I believe you wanted to make a final comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, for, you know, for the next meeting, you know, there were a couple of comments I thought were very appropriate from the public, and one of them was, you know, the exterior lighting. And I know how the gentleman described it and how irritating that can be, because I've kind of had similar situations. So I was wondering if you could, you know, kind of address that next time around and maybe have those exterior lights pointing upward or, you know, minimize the reflection coming off the building. So that would be one thing. And, you know, I think for us as a commission and the town planner for next meeting, you know, one of... This thing never works right. So for the commission and the town planner next time, one of the items that he suggested, and again, it goes back to the culvert, was that we require that, you know, the culvert be fixed before permit authorization, a building permit authorization can be issued. So I just want to make sure that that is included in, you know, some of the correspondence for, you know, next month or whenever it comes back before us for, for approval.
I agree with that. I think we discussed that, or I know I discussed that with Mr. Pugini, you know, prior when we had the other application to say that before any building permit be, at least it would be my, my suggestion, before any building permit would, would be, would be issued, that the culvert issue would be, would be addressed, and that would be the first thing that would take place.
And by, for my, Mr. Chairman, by "address," does that mean all that work complete?
Done. I mean, it's, I understand that that may, you know...
It's an enormous change from typical, I mean, that typically powers the CO, right? You have a trial and a power.
No, I understand that, but again, that's, we have other commission...
I understand, no, I, I get it.
We have other, we have other commission members here, but again, this is a situation that has been, you know, it's been ongoing for quite some time, and I think the priority, at least in my mind, other commission members may disagree with me, but I think that should be the first priority to be addressed. That, again, is just simply my opinion.
I understand.
And I'm sure you have your opinion.
Yeah, I understand.
And I respect that, and I'm sure you'll respect mine.
I do, I do. I just wanted to point out the fact that, you know, you lose the entire winter season of doing work inside the building. Obviously, when it's work that is a requirement of a CO, it's got to be done, you can post a, you know, requirement of a bond, there's a number of protections that you have. It just seems that this particular applicant catches zero breaks, with all due respect. I mean, again, they buy the property, they come, nothing is provided, no notice is provided of the issue, they're the ones who are resolving what really is a municipal problem, with all due respect. They're taking a big piece of that issue and resolving it by, by taking that, that effort that was done without plans in 2018, and the town sort of sat back and said, "Okay," and never did anything about it. It's, it's a little disappointing, I understand. And I do have great respect for the commission and the work that you do, but it's, it's an unusual request.
I, I fully understand, and I certainly understand your, you know, your opinion. Again, Mr. Cohen did have a couple of que, I don't know if you're in a position right now to address just the lighting, instead of, you know, continuing in our next meeting, going, kind of rehashing things, if you'd like to address some of the issues concerning lighting and...
Yeah, I think actually, if you're going to keep the public hearing open, which it sounds like you're going to do, we might also come back with a plan that shows you maybe exhibits of, you know, the lighting that would be used, might be more appropriate than us just speculating.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
So at this point in time, there's no other comments from the commission? Mr. Pugini?
And then one last, please.
Mr. Pugini, any comments from you?
No more comments. I was going to mention the motion, I didn't expect a vote tonight, so I did, wanted you to just discuss that tonight, so, looks like that was done, so I'm all set.
And I believe you'd like to make one final comment.
I'm sorry, it's getting late. I would encourage, I know you'll get the minutes, but I would encourage all of you to watch the Wetlands Commission meeting, because it'll be interesting for me also, only because when, when this matter was in front of them at the July 26th meeting, which was after the June meeting, we were here with you, and, and the commission was trying to figure out, you know, what to do with the particular issue. One of the things that the commission directed the environmental planner to do was to go back to the rest of the departments, because everything, everybody's got a piece of it, and that being the problem. Wetlands doesn't have the engineering ability to decide if the fix was correct or not, it should go back to legal. I always, when I talk to Janice, I say, "This is your problem, Janice, it's not, it's not Wetlands." But I understand where you're coming from. Just wanted to give you some of the history.
I, I think we fully understand, to some degree, this has been a bit of a ping-pong match. And, you know, hopefully, with the Wetlands Commission and with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the game will finally be over and we'll decide who the winner is and perhaps who the loser is on that. So, you know, certainly, we hope this will be resolved by next month. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for application 412-23 for December 11th.
Good. We have a motion to continue the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to seeing you next month. All right, it brings us to our next item on the agenda. It's a, again, a public hearing, and we'll just wait a second. It's a, it's a public hearing, it's a zoning text amendment, electric car charging facilities for Gem Property Group slash W, for the WI zone. And Mr., Aaron, if you please read a legal notice and...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Discuss...
Mr. Chairman, I need to excuse myself from this application.
And if you note all correspondence for the record, and also, I am going to be excusing myself for the presentation also.
This is item 50223, zoning text amendment for Gem Property Group to add a definition to section 2.2 and to add electric vehicle charging facility as a lawful use under section 4.110.1b.16 in the Watershed Interchange District. Full text of the proposed minimal amendment is available in the planning and zoning issue. Mr. Chairman, I only have one item. It's inspection report from the Wallenford Fire Department, saying no violations found. That's item 50223A.
Thank you very much. As you can see, we have two members off, so there's only three of us. Are you okay with us moving forward with three members? Century means we have to, all three of us would have to say yes to the amendment.
Oh, because there's no alternates this evening?
Correct. Well, we have one. He's filling in.
Oh, but you're filling, okay. Oh, no, I've never been in this situation. Well, we're here, okay.
I know.
I came in, everybody left.
So we'll proceed. All right. Yes, all right.
We're prepared. Hi, my name, thank you for hearing our application. My name's Elizabeth Verna. My brother Gerald Verna, we're both managing members of Gem Property Group. My brother Gerald Verna, we're both managing members of Gem Property Group, 101 North Plains Industrial Road, Wallingford, Connecticut. Gosh, I wanted to thank the chairman, but are you the chairman now, Mr. Vernoit?
Just acting.
Oh, okay. This evening, we are requesting a text amendment to the Wallingford zoning regulations. More specifically, we are proposing that the additional text be added to section 4.10B, watershed interchange district, WI, and section 2.2 definitions. We're proposing a new use for section 4.10, and that use is number 16. There currently are 15 permitted uses with site plan approval, and this would be for electrical vehicle charging facility. And then in section 2.2, we are asking that another definition be added. You currently have electrical vehicle charging station. We'd like to propose a definition for electrical vehicle charging facility, defining in more detail what, what uses would be permitted. Both the additional use and the definition comply with the purpose stated in the zoning regulations as it pertains to the WI district, which states, "The purpose of the watershed interchange district is to utilize land with accessibility to Interstate 91 located in the Wallingford Watershed Protection District in a manner designed to best protect the town's public drinking water supply resources while allowing low intensity uses and emerging technological development." So the text amendments and its proposed use, in our opinion, meet the purpose of the WI zone as well as the plan of conservation and development. I included a conceptual plan along with my text amendment change for an idea. I'm a very visual person, you know, as builders, we're visual, and so we included that just so that you could get an idea of some of the benefits of adding this use. Number one, we could currently build something that is highlighted in the gray. This plan would call for less impervious surface. The building size would be significantly less, parking would be less, and in a lot of cases, the solar panels that might be installed over the spaces would allow for protecting, you know, water drainage, right, evaporation. Lastly, this text amendment will be the first zoning regulation that is an EV charging facility as a primary use in the state of Connecticut. So it would be something that Wallingford is a pioneer in, which I'm, I, we're very proud of. I think you're all aware that the governor passed the Connecticut Clean Air Act. And where, you know, many of us may not agree with many of the mandates, there are a lot of incentives for electrical vehicles. And currently, the governor is mandating that electrical vehicle stations be, with new state buildings, be 20% of the parking, and with any construction that is over $100,000 or 30 parking spaces, 10% of the parking, which we could have a debate about that. As I said before, I really don't like mandates. However, we believe, and I think many of us could agree in this room, that this effort to get rid of gas-powered vehicles in this state is going to happen, whether we like it or not. In 2011, there were a total of 108 registered EV vehicles. July of 2023, there's a total of 36,000, and only six months prior to that, there were 22,000. So in a six-month period, there were, there was a $14,000 increase. Obviously, there's a lot of incentives to buy these cars. So we feel that a use of only EV charging is a responsible way to develop, to be allowed in the WI zone. It's off of the interstate. So I proposed our regulation, and I worked with Kevin Panini on this. You all have the regulation that I submitted, correct?
Yep. This one?
Yeah.
Okay. I will find it.
The three commissioner thing threw her off.
I can't believe the most important thing with all these tabs. Oh, there it is, sorry.
All right.
Text amendment. So if you look at the attachment to our application, 4.10B.16 is the 16th use that would be allowed in the WI zone, electrical vehicle charging facility. And we came up with the definition, because you need a definition of what it is, and basically, we took it from the electrical vehicle charging station, and then we identified that the location has to be within one mile of the interstate right-of-way. It cannot be located on more than three acres, because there's, there has been concern even in the plan of conservation and development, using the larger pieces for other types of development, and that the vehicle size shall not exceed 26,000 pounds, which is part of your definition of delivery vehicles for parcels. So we tried to maintain it to smaller vehicles. 26,000 pounds is probably the size... Can you... I don't know.
Like a UPS truck or something like that, similar?
Get name record.
Oh, I'm, I'm... Delivery truck?
I'll get yelled at.
Oh. Gerald Verna?
Eleven or ten.
With Gem Property Group.
Thank you. So the 26,000 pounds came from your parcel sorting and retail distribution definition, and the 3,000 square feet came from the, of retail space, came from the WI district. You currently allow 3,000 square feet of retail. So we tried to maintain the WI regulation with the small change of allowing it as a primary facility. If you have any questions, I have a bag full of material that I'm more than happy to share.
Thank you. That concludes your part of the presentation.
Yes, yes.
I'll bring it back to the commission and ask commissioners if they have any questions. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, I'm okay with, with adding this into our regulations. However, I'd, I'd like to ask the town planner a couple of questions, if I might. Basically, this is the watershed interchange district, and technically, it's not the watershed protection district.
It's both. It's also...
Okay, that even makes it better, because, yeah, you're right, the watershed protection is an overlay. But my question is, there were no comments from departments on this regulation, so I'm wondering if, you know, the water division had any issues with, with this use being added?
Uh, no, they, they did not, and I couldn't force a comment out of him. He was just, he didn't really have anything bad to say, he also didn't have anything kind of amazing, I guess, to say about it. So it was kind of a neutral, you know, he didn't have any issues with it, as long as it was kept to a certain size. And engineering was the same way, and also economic development, same, it was a sort of a neutral, didn't have much to say on it. So if you want them to, to write something to the commission, they, they probably have no issue doing that, but they didn't have any comments.
I would say yes.
You would like...
Write it.
Okay, yeah, that would, that would be great if they could, you know, put, put their comments in, into the record. And then my, my last question, again, is a procedural question in that, you know, usually zoning text amendments come before, you know, the regional planning commission, and we had one for the accessory apartments the other night, but I haven't seen this one come across. Does, does, does this have to go before the regional planning commission first, before we get approval?
I don't believe it does. I have to triple check, but I don't believe it abuts the municipality that abuts the town lines, the IX like abuts Meriden, Durham, and whatnot.
Yeah, right.
So I don't think it did, but I could double check for you and send it in case, but...
Yeah, because I, in all, all the meetings I've been to, typically, we get the referrals before they go out to the respective towns' meetings, public hearings. So that's, and, and again, last week, we, this was not on the agenda. So, yeah, if we're going to wait for comments from, you know, the town engineer, water division, and ask this question, again, I'm, I'm okay with the amendment, but just to dot the i's and cross the t's, I think would be good.
Any other commissioner?
No, since, I mean, if this is a, a gas station, right, there'd be all sorts of things you'd have to do, but, you know, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot here. You're piping electricity and you're sticking it in an automobile. I guess you have a little, you're going to have a little stop, and I just, you're going to have like a little, it's not all that little, but you're going to have a nice little store to go along with it. So it seems to be, economically, it seems to be the next project. My only concern that have already been raised, you know, are we, have we gone through all the procedural steps that we need to do it? Because I would hate to approve it, and then two months later, you're back doing it all over again, because we made a mistake.
Oh, I'd hate to, I'd hate to be, have you back and us be back having to do it again because we skipped a procedural step. Okay, it's sometimes annoying, but it's, it's something that we have to do.
Is, is there any way that a motion and could be made with a condition being met administratively, that if he receives from water and sewer and from town engineering an okay for this, so that we don't have to come back, and that if he, if the town planner identifies that it's not adjacent to a neighboring town, I'm, I'm pretty sure it isn't. We, we looked at that. I can't pull up the tat, the zoning map, because we don't have internet, but could a motion be made with those conditions being met by the administrat, adminis, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll pass that on, ask Kevin, our town planner, his thoughts. I, just, before we go to you, real quick, though, I just, and this is just a question. Now they're getting into the electric 18-wheelers.
Yeah.
And I know it's 26, it's not, so that, those could...
No.
Okay. But I'd ask.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, it, the, the spots aren't even, wouldn't even be large.
Well, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like they fit, but you just never know when them all of a sudden showing up. Town planner, comments from town planner?
I guess that would be more up to the commission. I did ask them for comments, but they did not give me any, so I can't obviously force them to give me comments, but, yeah, they did speak about it, staff meeting, and didn't have any concerns, but, again, I could check with, with Scrogg too.
I think he's gotten them verbally for the departments.
Just a question, I mean, if the departments that could have had, could have made comments, right, they were given notice, here's the time to do it, then, and they have, and they, and they have not, or they've said they just have no real concerns, would that be an adequate basis to say, "Okay, we've checked with the other ti, the other departments, we're fine," and then would be able, would we then be able to proceed tonight? I'm sorry, this question to you, Kevin.
Oh. So Kevin, the question was, you talked to them all, and they said they have no issues?
Yeah, so...
Okay, so you, all right.
And they had an opportunity to comment?
It's verbal.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I'll get to that, once I get him.
I think it's just a matter of the Scrogg issue, I guess, if that didn't go out correctly, then that would have to be addressed and sent out pretty much immediately, so...
All right. Any other comments from town, or town planner?
Uh, no, I think as long as they, I think the concerns from water and sewer were more so, you know, after it gets approved during site plan approval, essentially. I think his concern was, he liked that it was restricted to a, to a size, I guess, so I think as long as it stays the same as it is, they were concerned more about larger vehicles being allowed, so, you know, I wish they'd given me comments, but they decided not to, so, but if you, if you would like expanded comments from them, I can understand that and, you know, wait till December.
Hearing, we, this is a public hearing, there's people out there. Are there any individuals that would like to speak on this public hearing? I think I see somebody.
You know, Bob DeMayo, Marie Lane, I have a couple of questions and then some comments. First of all, I think a charging station, obviously, is the future, we're going to need them. I do have a question on why the one mile from an exit?
I guess we were trying to limit traffic and just trying to keep it near the interchange, so...
The reason why I ask is...
Yeah.
There's, there's the, there's a Federal Highway Association funding, maybe the funding you're talking about, I'm not sure, that talks about, it's called the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan. That's come from the state, there's $15 million this year, 52. Is this the one that you're talking about, 52 over five years?
There is a, 52 is given to the state from federal government.
So, so let me just start by saying this, I think we're rushing here. This is a big deal, and I feel like this is kind of loose, so just going to start with that and be blunt. The reason why the one mile is in there is because it's for a specific application on a specific site. We make zoning changes to our uses, we have to think about the district, not an application, right? I think that's how you guys typically roll here. This is for a specific location, and I'm not saying, you know, it couldn't be approved and eventually it makes sense. So that's just one thing I want to point out, that didn't seem to come across here. This is dialed in to the regulations the state has. The state identified 12 regions, 12 locations, they wanted to put these charging stations in for this $52 million. And the one in this area was exit 16 northbound or 17 southbound on 91 in Meriden. This would need to get an exception from the state to get funding to put it on 15 if they so choose to get reimbursed for it, so... So I just want to put that out there. So now let's talk about that property. You guys know what that property is? It's Route sixty-eight, Northrop Road, it's exit fifteen, that are graded E and F traffic-wise, depending upon where you're coming from and how you look at it. We're talking about thirty to forty charging stations. Sure, right now it might take forty minutes to charge a vehicle, but to Mr. Parent's point, envision ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, when we're charging and it takes five minutes, we now have the equivalent of a gas station, larger than any gas station in town, forty gas pumps, so to speak, where we'd be putting that traffic into that area that is already compromised, with warehouses that haven't been built, there's still to come in, vacant properties that aren't even populated, and we're, and this is something that towns have taken a ton of time to look through and study. I'm not saying in a workshop and take a year, but really, this is not doing this justice. I mean, this needs to be talked about, there's different charging station types, there's type one through three, three is fast charging, you know, there's two-forties is commercial, there's one-ten for residential, there's zoning, people, towns are putting in regulations that are getting very thorough and specific about this. We're going to end up with an unintended consequence years from now, where we're going to, that whole area is going to get locked up again. I'm very disappointed if this gets approved, this should be denied, the town should regroup, we should talk about how to do this the right way, which is study what's going on in the state and across the country, I'm not saying take a year, study it, and let's put in regulations that aren't specific to a site, and the watershed is, by the way, is connected to Meriden. This is specific for a site, we need to talk about this globally. You know, we talked about it a few times, let's do it right earlier, we did it with the warehousing finally. Let's not make the same mistake again, have an unintended consequence of kind of rushing something through. This is a big deal, it may not feel like a big deal now, you plug in some stations, ah, it's going to take forty minutes, you know, it's nice, we're going to need them, we do need them. It really requires more time and thought, and you may end up saying, yeah, this makes sense, but really, forty charging stations, takes half an hour now, it might take five minutes ten years from now, and now we have the largest gas station in Wallingford in one of the worst traffic areas. So I really just think you need to give this a lot of thought. I think it should actually, again, it should be just denied, the town regroup, think about what it makes sense for this use. Why not other districts? Why just the WI? Why not in the IX? Why not in the commercial? I mean, we're going to have to face that, we should be thinking about this globally. Disappointed, it would be a word I would use, and, you know, if this went through without the real legwork that's needed here.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission, do they have any-
May I comment?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Number one, this is not a site plan approval. That will come next.
I'm sorry.
Number one, this is not a site plan approval. Number two, this is not on the list to get any federal funding like the gentleman in the audience had expressed. Number three, other people, landowners, are more than welcome to come in front of the commission and propose other areas. Just like the gentleman in the audience stated, this is kind of, as my engineer described, the Wild West, right? EV charging stations, what is it going to look like forty years from now? Are cars going to be able to be charged in a minute? Currently, it's a thirty-minute charging. Phase one is over twenty-four hours. Level two goes up to twelve hours. The DCs are thirty minutes. And I just learned this in the last couple of days because, because I just did some Traffic, again, related to a site plan approval. So the things that he brought up, I absolutely respect, and they definitely should be considered. I think that planning and zoning, a lot of it is about planning. However, to deny this would be a shame for Wallingford, because it would be the first time that anyone has approved something like this in the state of Connecticut, where it was an electrical vehicle facility. And I don't know if there's going to be four stations. What we'd like to do as developers is get the text amendment, and then a company or ourselves will come before you with a site plan that you could either approve or deny. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commissioners.
Yeah.
Commissioner Parent?
So, I mean, this is, this is only conceptual, this is not something you're necessarily, you may-
No, those are pictures that I probably shouldn't have even included, that I just wanted to give the commission an idea of what an electrical facility, electrical charging facility looks like out in California.
Okay. And when we talk about the mile, to be within a mile-
That could change, I think that was something Kevin and I spoke about, that we were thinking that it should be near an interchange.
Well, yeah, I think you got-
So that you weren't worried about traffic and having, it was just something that I would be more than happy to remove.
But, well, no, I think you've got, the point is that, you know, if you're more than, if you've got to go off the interchange and you've got to go more than a mile, I think maybe, especially if there's going to be somebody up in Meriden, I think I'd hold on to the highway and get off there, instead, because a mile is waste, you know, and so having that, no, I think that having that restriction makes sense, because you want to make sure that you're regionally close to the highway.
That's what we discussed.
I mean, I'm going to Vermont, my electric car, and I got to get electricity, I don't want to go, you know, all over the town, and whereas, you want to make sure that this can be accessed easily.
Any other commissioners, Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. DeMayo brings up some pretty good points about the traffic. I'm certainly well aware of the traffic discussions we've had over the past many months and years in that area. I think that, yeah, the one mile kind of, I think, is pretty restrictive. And, you know, I honestly haven't listened to the governor's plan, although I know he's talked about it, it was in the news just the other day, I think. But, you know, quite honestly, what I had envisioned myself was, you know, having these charging stations, you know, as part of the rest areas on the highways, not specifically, you know, in, you know, specific town, there's plenty of rest areas that provide gas and, you know, adding on a few electrical charging stations would be what I want to do. But again, basically, I'm okay with, you know, having this as a facility in Wallingford. So however, you know, based on his comments and, you know, thinking about, you know, the traffic a bit, and honestly, initially, I really wasn't too concerned with the traffic generation here. You know, there's a lot more stuff going on in that area down, over the years, so, but all things considered, what I think I would like to do is, you know, go back to the departments. I think, you know, the points Mr. DeMayo brings up, I think town engineers should weigh in on, you know, some of the potential traffic concerns. You know, you were amenable to maybe removing that one mile restriction.
We could remove it, it was, I don't even know how we came about with that, but it definitely could be removed.
I think the water department was concerned that if you allowed it as a use, it would be put everywhere throughout the zone, so.
So, yeah, so they should really write that up, so we can, you know, see what they have to say.
I can't force them to do, you know, everything, he kind of has conversations with me.
Right, but, you know, you can relay our concerns back, and, you know, they have a vested interest, I mean, you know, this is their watershed protection district. And then again, I think having the regional planning commission weigh in on, you know, basically, they look at the text regulations and see if there's any impacts to neighboring towns and effects on Long Island Sound, that's really what it is. So I think that having them comment on this might be a good thing before we move forward. But again, overall, I'm okay with the regulation change.
Okay. So basically, comments from the water department regarding-
Town engineer.
Town engineer regarding the one mile, and then regional planning authority.
Yeah.
I think if the commission liked to, we can continue the public hearing at December eleventh.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, I'd like one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue application five oh two dash twenty-three zoning text amendment, Gem Property Group, to our December eleventh meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other information that you might need for the next meeting?
I think it's going to be traffic, just engineering.
Engineering, the things you requested, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
And this brings us to our next item on our agenda, it's item number five, it's a zoning text amendment, accessory apartments, put forward by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's for section six point one five. As this is coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Pajini, if you would please take over on this. First of all, before you do that, Mr. Parent, if you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
With pleasure, Mr. Chairman. This is item nine oh five dash twenty-three, zoning text amendment to alter language in section six point one five, accessory apartments, full text can be found in the Planning and Zoning Office. I have the, have a copy of the, of the proposed changes to the regulation, it doesn't have a number on it, but it's, I would just put it down, it's nine oh five twenty-three. I have a, let's see, Wallingford Fire Department Inspection Report dated ten, twelve, twenty-three, as item number nine oh five twenty-three A. I have inner department, Planning and Zoning, inner department referral notice of proposed development, and this is signed by Scott Schiffman of the Engineering Department, item one oh one twenty, it's also, oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I think I went too far, I got nine oh five twenty-three and then this nine oh five twenty-three A.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. And Mr. Pajini, if you would please address this application.
The current iteration were changes requested by the lot apartment, and those are dated ten thirty, so it should say revised ten seventeen twenty twenty-three and ten thirty twenty twenty-three, hopefully those are in front of you. So the approval of accessory apartments, that'll be subject to used-to-be site plan approval, I'm looking to change it to administrative approval, so that'll, you know, go out to like any change of use would, roughly two-week turnaround time, if you have any questions, you can see it on a meeting. And we just changed conditions to requirements. So essentially, the same thing that was on the previous iteration, it's just worded differently, because it was, I was told it was confusing. So essentially, any primary dwelling where the living area is based on the assessor's property card, they were using livable floor area, the property card for the assessor actually calls it living area, so anybody that has a living area less than or equal to twenty-five hundred square feet gets up to a thousand square feet for an accessory apartment, and in primary dwellings with living area greater than twenty-five thousand square feet, forty percent of the total living area may be allowed up to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet.
And Mr. Pajini, if you could just explain, just for the public, what this increase is, what prior regulation had as far as the square feet, and how this is, how this has changed?
Yeah, so regulations before only allowed up to seven hundred and eighty square feet, regardless of the house size, so this allows a little bit bigger of an accessory apartment that's allowed, and if you have a larger house, you know, with twenty-five hundred square feet of living area, which is quite substantial, you can have, you know, a little bit larger accessory apartment up to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet. And much of these comments were also from the zoning enforcement officer as well, she had a lot of input on these regulations. So we just got rid of the maximum of two bedrooms, because I don't know why it matters, you know, why you could have two bedrooms or three, or, you know, a thousand square feet, you're only going to have a bedroom so large. The common areas essentially, you know, we don't, we kind of look at the apartment as a whole, we don't really factor in common areas anyway, so that was kind of a moot point, the way that she saw it, because she goes out and inspects them, so she wanted to get rid of that. She didn't like the, no accessory apartment shall be recreated as an addition to an attached garage unless it's on the second floor, you know, she doesn't see any reason, I don't think the commission had any issues at the workshop, I think it was explained as to why that was requested to be removed, you know, we don't see any reason why someone can't just convert their attached garage into accessory apartment if it's, if it's okay with the fire marshal and the other departments. And that's the other thing, the administrative approval will still go out to the other departments for comments as well. And then that's kind of, doesn't need to be stated, expansion of a principal dwelling shall be permitted, I mean, that's, we allow that now anyway. You know, as long as the survey is on the property and they're compliant with setbacks, there's no reason that someone could propose an addition for an accessory apartment. Lot apartment was confused on the prior wording regarding the parking, so we just corrected it to say single-family dwelling unit parking in accordance with six eleven. No additional curb cuts shall be permitted instead of provided, and then there was just a minor change with the getting rid of if not, and getting, replacing it with in cases where this is not available. A report from the Wallingford Health Department shall be provided indicating proposed water supply and onsite sewage disposal system will adequately serve the use. And then the notarized affidavit, that's requested to be removed as well. We can't, we never get all of them back anyway, and there's really no way to enforce it, so it's kind of, I don't know, sort of a system that isn't working anyway, so I guess that's up to the commission as to if they would want to remove that or change the process or something, but, so that's basically the extent of the changes. Hopefully that, if you have any questions.
All right, and again, the point is, with the accessory apartments, as it says early on, that it, the occupant has to have at least, the occupant, one of the occupants in the dwelling has to have at least a one-half ownership interest in the property.
Correct, yeah.
So this isn't a situation where- So, this isn't a situation where you could have an, put an accessory apartment on a, you know, on a property and have it turn into a completely rental property. It still stays as a, if you would, a residential, residential property with, or a single-family residential property, I guess, with an accessory apartment. It wouldn't, it wouldn't turn into a strictly investment property.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And I guess just for members of the public, this proposed change in the regulation, the commission had at least one and I believe two workshops discussing accessory apartments and how to deal with it. And as Mr. Pugini mentioned, we had a draft that was put together, and then it was reviewed by our law department and made some very minor changes that he had addressed when he was going over them. So, this is not something that's just coming before the commission for, you know, the first time. It has been discussed by the commission in workshops as well as reviewed by our corporate counsel. And again, during those workshops, certainly all members of the public are free to attend the workshops and express their opinions. With that, I bring it to commission members for any comments on the regulations.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this looks fine to me. And additionally, we did sign off on this with the Regional Planning Commission last Thursday. I don't know if Mr. Pugini got the notification yet, but we did say this was okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commission members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, and I see that we have no members of the public in attendance. So, I'll bring it back to Mr. Pugini if you'd like to make any final comments before I make a motion to close the public hearing.
No final comments.
All right. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 905-23 zoning text amendment, accessory apartments, section 6.15.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. Voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, I entertain a motion on the application now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 905-23 Planning and Zoning Text Amendment, accessory apartments, section 6.15. Text amendment to be modified, section 6.15 of the town of Wallingford zoning regulations as outlined in language dated 10/10/2023 and revised to 10/30/2023 because it's better defines the current trends in accessory apartments.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. Voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right. Moving on, Mr. Pugini, I'll turn the rest of the meeting over to you.
Bond releases. I have not had a chance to go out there and look at that request. That one came in kind of late, right before the meeting. So, I'll probably go out this month and take a look at that. So, let's say no on that one. Administrative approvals. Any questions on any of those?
Any questions on administrative approvals? Seeing none, moving on.
The PCC meeting scheduled for 2024. Hopefully, all of you got that. If you haven't, I believe I can make copies if needed. We also got the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter, which had some interesting little blurbs on that. So, if you haven't looked at that, take a look at that. It's regarding traffic, GIS mapping, and Court of Appeals decides how to measure the length of a dead-end road. So, some, learned some things on that one. ZBA decisions, October. Any?
Any questions on ZBA decisions? And then, I guess, moving down, any questions on the November 20th ZBA meeting? I think seeing none, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission for November 13, 2023.
Absolutely. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're done. Thank you very much, gentlemen and lady.